Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January third, twenty twenty-three meeting of the planning board. Happy New Year. Um, if everyone would please make sure their phones are on silent, that would be greatly appreciated. I'll start with a roll call from the board.
Kathy L here.
Crystal here.
Test your ear.
Yeah, here.
Alan present.
Uh, Nat president. And I believe we have Joy, um, Donna online. Is that correct?
Yep.
Donna present.
I believe so. Give her a minute. She's trying to... She's muted.
Can you hear me?
I see her. Yeah, she's...
Hello?
Donna, can you hear me? Could you unmute and...
I think she's trying to talk. I just... He's trying to talk so it's like...
It's all... She's amazing when it works. We're sure we're not something...
We're doing it.
Anyone else up there?
Oh, God. We'll get them on any bad sites.
I hope not. We're just going.
I'm going to school.
I'm here. Can't unmute.
Okay.
She just sent a message. Can you unmute?
No, cannot unmute somebody.
It should... Oh, you know what? I knew we'd do it. I knew we would do this. All right, um, Donna, can you try again? Maybe we now we can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Hello?
We haven't explored for a full quarter anyway.
Okay, Donna, I can't hear you. I'm glad she is talking.
Donna, we could hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm here.
Thank you, Donna.
You have the power to unmute?
Yeah, I can. I am able to unmute.
Wow, well, all right then.
I just can't...
Typically, it's...
Who's the boss?
You cannot unmute people. That's interesting. Okay.
Because I said I'm not because I scored.
Alright, so we have Donna here and present. Donna will also be a voting member this evening, so will not be in as an alternate. Reviewing approval of minutes, uh, going through the December six meeting minutes, I still have, um, a pile of corrections.
Second round, okay. I got the second round and I corrected them.
More, more than I think is worth even discussing here, so if you folks want to approve with the condition of me sitting with or meeting with Barbara to do it.
Make a motion that you sit with Barbara to do it.
I said, yeah.
Thank you.
We say.
Sit with me?
Yeah.
And guys, what time do you guys want to sit and do this?
It'll be...
That's a big...
Like, whatever, however you want to handle it. I have a... Back. So, motion to approve December sixth meeting minutes was made by John and seconded by Joyce, um, as amended with the notes that I now provided to Barbara. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Kathy L.
Crystal here.
Test your ear.
In your mind?
Alan right?
No, I...
Masucci, I.
Thank you, Donna. December thirteen meeting minutes. Um, the only note I had on that was in line eighty-seven. Um, there was some discussion around village district zoning to ten square feet to forty square feet. That would be ten thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet.
Which one are you saying?
Line eighty-seven.
Okay.
I definitely did not recommend changing village district zoning from ten square feet to forty square feet.
Yeah, I got it.
Where you that.
I got it.
Alright. Make a motion to approve December thirteenth with the amended.
I second.
Roll call vote.
Uh, Kathy L, I.
Crystal here.
Test your ear.
In your mind?
Alan right?
That fine.
Masucci, I.
You done? Next up, staff updates.
Um, Conservation Commission and staff and Don met last twenty-second to discuss, um, a function-based wetlands buffer system. They're gonna be looking at trying to introduce a zoning orders, but we're working with him, with the consultant to see what he comes up with. There was a special on like the point system, trying to make the buffer larger that may prove to be more hindrance on the zoning instructor. It's gonna have to be like the one enforcing it, so I don't know if it's... We'll have to see what the consultant provides. But we use the, uh, the city of Kingston's model and, um, to have them look at it. So there's a lot of discussion of that. It's like you wouldn't have like points for each. I've seen that thing, um, happening, um. There's a certain criteria you can get points, so it was like, well, we already have a fifty buffer. It would seem that the most you probably get headed up to, I believe it was up to a hundred.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm not sure if it's...
But if it was minor, it'd be maybe down to thirty feet.
It should be down, it could be down to thirty feet, but it depends on who's doing it, maybe more cost prohibitive to...
Part of the problem was the consultant says some of these are two to four thousand dollars to do these evaluations.
Oh, so via colleagues they put on us?
Originally, there was a discussion about making it more objective, not expanding the zone. Now we're talking about expanding the zone?
Well, it depends. There are various functions that it might, um, you know, that the wetlands buffer and the wetlands itself might have certain functions that are greater than other functions, and then you would give points to each one. And if it only was a minor thing, we could get down to thirty feet. A lot of them would fall into the same fifty feet that we had. But if it were a special circumstance where it had wildlife impacts and so forth, it could go up to seventy-five to a hundred feet. But it would require a soil scientist to evaluate every application and effect.
Is that what Plastow does? They have a soil scientist?
Actually, it's the one.
That can't seem...
No.
So they...
No, East Kingston is the one that's looking at this. This is different, what I think he was talking about when he talked about this stuff.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if too many examples were, the fifty foot hasn't been appropriate. I don't know. I don't have any complaints where that has been too little.
Right.
Um, and now we're looking to expand it. I guess some concerns...
Well, the point of this was to maybe even lessen it if you had this system. The problem is somebody has, you have to pay somebody to evaluate this. And the landowner would ultimately be responsible for that, and it's gonna be a two to four thousand dollar plus. There was some pushback once we heard that about the whole process.
I guess I...
Do you agree with that?
Yeah. I guess my concern is I'm hearing the hundred and seventy-five foot too, and that's a concern to me that we go off.
Seventy-five foot to a hundred foot, right.
And who would make the determination when that would apply?
The soil scientist.
So every single one would require a soil scientist?
See, now, now, I'd be more open to if you had a wetland and you wanted to hire a soil scientist, you could opt for that.
Right.
Yeah. But, yeah, to apply it to everyone and now go to a hundred. Well, I mean...
I mean, this is all like primary aspects too.
Yeah.
But...
So it didn't come to any conclusions. It just sort of, you know, we broke up the meeting and said, everybody will think about it. Some of us thought this could be very cost prohibitive to somebody, so...
Well, I think it only costs, from macro view, I mean, I hadn't heard anybody complain that fifty foot was not enough. I've heard nobody, no, no, there's been no example. Someone's come back and said fifty's not enough.
Yeah.
And now we're looking to expand it. I...
The consultant that was there, Mark Jacobs, said that the thinking now was more to a little more than that, maybe seventy-five feet. It was better. But it all depends on what the function of the setback is in relation to the wetland itself.
The state is there, we have fifty, and I would go a bit, yeah. I think you can get a sense of how much I support this, uh, support this so far.
Zero support here.
Yeah, I thought it was from our previous discussion that it would help us when we were thinking about making, giving exemptions to people to know how valuable this wetland was using the...
Yeah, going down from fifty.
Yeah. Right.
But, but in that situation, you'd have to take a soil scientist in to tell you the value of it.
Well, I think going down from fifty, I think that would be something I, you know, but if you could go the other way, you go seventy-five or a hundred, that's where I'm having the hard look.
Right.
So, I guess, are we trying to solve a problem we don't have? I mean, what's, what's going on?
Maybe.
So I believe like the Conservation Commission was talking about the functionality of a wetland, like there were concerns that fifty foot might not be enough in some instances.
I just want to clarify, because I have a similar, one single example where that's the case. Show me a, show me an example when that's been the case. Absent that...
And beyond Kingston, I'm not sure there's anybody else who does this in the state. And if you wanted to proceed, you probably should talk to Kingston. That was his work though.
You get sense I don't want to proceed.
I know, I know, we kind of met so...
I think that was kind of the consensus among some of the people there. It was Conservation Commission have their point of view. Their charges to conserve. So...
Well, I think what I would be looking at on that is if somebody's coming in requesting a wetland buffer exemption or an exemption from, or they're looking for a waiver from the nine six. The nine six. That becomes their special permit, thank you. That becomes their avenue to create their justification, because how are they proving they have a hardship?
Right.
In this case, they're saying, hey, look, I've looked at this. There really is, the hardship is that the rules are overly stringent for the value of this wetland buffer. This would be why I would make this argument.
So I guess if they had a buffer, just because of the configuration of the land that was, let's say, a hundred feet at the top of this system, they wouldn't have to worry about anything.
Right.
But once you get into lessening, right, then that would, depends on how you write the regulations. That like required them to get professional help or send it to CMA, which you'll have to pay for, so, you know, if they have a soil scientist there. But you're gonna do that for every...
You have to for everybody doing this.
Yeah, and that, you know. So it just had preliminary discussion, still conclusion or anything. Everybody kind of said, okay, maybe they'll have a level G. They did this in two thousand eighteen, but it didn't need to anything. They had a series of meetings, just kind of figured out apparently. So, it's back again.
I am T point O.
We appreciate you being...
Yeah. Kind of floored us when it said, so how much would these things be? Two to four thousand of this.
I mentioned that, the soil scientist recommending work that...
And then the guy says, so size it. I'm gonna put a house here in the shed, and now we can't afford the shed. This will...
Sorry, no, don't be sorry, that...
But, you know, you have some input.
That, that was good.
But we probably, you know, if we got one more meeting, if it's ever gonna be planned, just say...
Yeah, say we run it before, you know, the planning board discussed it with them, hears their thoughts.
I don't see a lot of... That sounds like a good idea from anybody here, so I guess I can pass that along.
I think if, yeah, pass on this, someone will like it.
All to do with the nine point six, they're trying to eliminate it.
Which, which in all theory is a great idea, so like you don't want people to have to...
No, but you did all, how many people here went to that course that said you should use the nine point six? Probably not some of the new ones.
Not, not the newbies.
Remember that? You were here.
Was I here?
Yeah.
But, you know, if he...
Oh, well.
Let's say you had a, let's say you went up to seventy-five feet, just to cover maybe any particulars, just make that. And then entertain a lot of nine sixes, because if it's a circuit, I don't see any problem giving a nine six. It's not like you're intruding on the wetlands, it's just the buffer.
I, I think dragging people in here, I don't know, wait till ten, eleven o'clock, and we get done, and I figure it's ten, eleven o'clock. I think I could do without them.
Yeah.
I mean, we got wet... Here to nine, I think you know wetlands. I think wetlands, every, I struggle, the biggest thing that people come in here for is the nine point six special permits.
I was just saying, some people think we shouldn't do a lot of nine sixes. I was just saying, I don't see a problem.
You see him golf.
Yeah, saying a lot.
Chasing a lot of balls on the wetlands.
Playing it good. Really, that's a thought I very often...
Okay, let's go on to the public hearing. For our zoning amendment.
Great. This will be our first public hearing for the proposed twenty-two zoning amendments. Zoning amendment, every, um, we'll be going through the zoning amendments. The board will vote either funding events support of or no.
So like each, it would be each person, so if it was forwarded or...
Oh, yeah, yes, we want like seven.
Seven, Huxton, seven.
Yes. So we'll be going through each zoning amendment. Would you like to read through them?
If the chairman, so does that.
Sure.
Um, I have a question to pose.
Yes.
I see article one, I see article two. What happened?
It starts at article two.
So, uh, the numbering has been assigned, so it is still item number one as far as where we concerned. This is, the numbering is what, um, the town administrators put together. All these move forward for the town ballot. This is what's gonna be submitted to this thing. Nope, nope.
Always start.
Um, and before reading it, just to let everybody know, if you've already seen the memo, but a vote of yes from the board members or I means you as a board member support the zoning amendment going forward to be on, um, the ballot, and a vote of no, like you as a board member doesn't support the zoning commitment going forward. Majority goes forward, so, um, it's that. All right, so the first one.
First, like, do we already go forward or they all go forward?
Each.
So we're gonna do each individual one, open for public comment.
Against it, it's still going.
So let's say it was six yes, one no.
Yeah.
Yeah, we go forward.
Well, let's say it's only three against. Does it still go forward? Or plenty more recommending against? I don't remember how we did that in the past.
I have an answer for you in the future.
Okay.
I'll email everybody out if we come to that, a split.
It's gonna be asking around us whether plenty more vote against this.
Yes.
So...
There have been one or...
So I, I understand where that's coming from. These are all introduced by the planning board though versus like, I don't know if you're thinking of one that's, um, the major, even if you didn't support the petitioner, that one still has to go further. These are all like recommendations from the planning board, these ones. Um, okay. So I will...
We have a majority no vote, bigger issue here since we all talked to people.
Yeah, just, we shouldn't run into this for...
Right.
Yeah, I don't anticipate any language changes or anything tonight. We're hoping to one and done tonight, so...
Okay.
It's worked towards that. Okay. So, um, I've referenced in article two, and anybody in the audience or online, this are all supposed to be online, and if anybody wants to read along, there's somewhere here. Um, are you in favor amendment? Number one, to the Barrington zoning ordinance proposed by the planning board to amend the zoning map by changing tax back two fifty-one lots sixty-four and sixty-five from general residential to regional commercial. So before you vote, you open for public comment.
This time I will open public comment for article two zoning amendment. To... For our public.
Yes, I do. That's what the, um, owner of that property wants to do.
Right. That's the Barrington sand gravel.
Yes.
Well, that Lindsay Crosby.
Steve, yes. Well, it's not just...
Does he busy audience feel like to make comment?
Yeah, I was kind of wondering why.
If you could please walk to the...
Sure.
Sorry, I'll put a high breath.
You are reporting at public front table.
So my name's Joel Reynolds. I live at sixty-one weeks lane. Guess I'm wondering why this is being proposed, is the purpose of it, and what's the benefit, I guess, of it?
Well, yeah.
It kind of sounds like spot zoning to me.
But he owns two lots on one twenty-five that are zoned for commercial. And you always thought that these lot were the Sandy gravel operationist, these two lots were also that. And discovered that they were general residential. You're not gonna be putting single family on this.
It's commercial in the first five hundred feet and then resident, general residential behind.
Yeah, so, um, that was it. I mean, he just, you know, there was some discussion apparently with the zoning administrator. They always thought it should have been in there. It was really a mistake right from the beginning that they weren't included.
And we want to put commercial double on one twenty-five, and this is really a prime location.
Yeah, it's a commercial, you know.
You really answered my question.
Oh, okay.
It was a mistake. I saw that, so I was involved in the town for a long time, and, and when we, we, I was on plan with you.
And I was involved in, when they first, it was all residential pretty much before, and that I was involved, and it was changing.
And there was a lot of things that should have happened and didn't happen, and things, and there was mistakes back then, so...
Yeah, so just housekeeping.
That's all, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
So I'll close public comment unless somebody else says something.
If there's anybody online that would like to make a public comment on this, please raise your hands. Chairman, I do not see anybody online that would like to comment.
I'll close public comment then at this time and request a vote from the board.
Kathy L.
Crystal here. Test your ear.
In your mind?
Alan right?
That fine.
Masucci, I.
So that's seven in favor. Here on against. One million. No, we'll come next. Um, article three.
Are you in favor of zoning movement to the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by a planning board to amend section seven point three home occupations to clarify that home occupations must be conducted entirely within the structure of the single-family dwelling to limit the thirty percent square footage maximum to five hundred square feet and to limit the number of non-resident employees to one.
This time I will open public comment. Are there any discussion from board? Hearing that, I'll open public comment.
Good evening. Christopher Berry, uh, with Berry Surveying Engineering. I'm not a resident, but I own a business here in the town of Barrington. I typically don't speak, um, these types of topics, but tonight you'll hear me at least twice. Question about article three relates to the section where it talks about single-family dwelling. It's not uncommon, uh, in this town and surrounding towns for people to have out structures that they run small businesses out of, and this seems to clearly prohibit that. I question why that might be, if it was intentional, uh, or if additional language might be needed to clarify the intent, the use of a piece of property to allow for somebody to do that in the future, or if the board recognizes the fact that if somebody wants to do that in an outbuilding, uh, they would seek a variance, uh, prove the fifth criteria for special conditions of the land to meet the hardship, and whether or not the board wants to place landowners of the town of Barrington in that position.
Well, we might want to go down to the next one, because you're talking about a business, not an occupation, which...
That's what we...
Two different things, so...
So just looks at another category, possible occupation, home business.
So what is the fundamental addition, uh, this, yeah, what is the fundamental difference between a home occupation where somebody runs a business?
A home occupation might be a guy who either, he could be a, an accountant or something, or a professional that maybe has one or two people show up occasionally to do business within not much impact on the neighborhood. Uh, maybe it's a hairdresser with one chair who does things like that or something. If you want to get into the business, to be, go to the next one, to the home business, which as you can see allows up to, uh, accessory buildings on the property into the property to store things. Landscaping business or something?
Sure, but in your first example, where you have a professional office, it couldn't be conducted outside of the home. That's...
Right, so... Then you would just say, well, I want to go for the next category. Um, business would have more impact on the neighborhood.
So, but that's, that's the underlying question, is whether or not that would have actual fundamental additional impact on a neighborhood. I also question whether or not a home occupation needs to come to the planning board, or whether that is strictly enforced by zoning, and whether a home business needs to come to the site, come before this board for a site plan review. And if the pure difference is whether or not it's conducted inside the primary structure or inside a secondary structure, again, whether you're placing onus on a small business owner trying to get his or her business outside of its primary structure.
Home occupation is not...
Yeah, it's just back to the zoning administrator.
Get off the occupation, so.
Doesn't even require that.
Just do it.
Yeah.
And the home business.
Think that, you gotta go to zone.
Yeah.
That has to be checked by the zoning administrator.
Yeah, right.
Home business, you come as a conditional use permit to the planning board.
Right, so to be, to be able to run, um, you know, like on Ray, to be able to run Ray's business out of his garage instead of his living room table, he would then need to come before this board, uh, for a home business, which would require him to have a initial use permit. So I'm just pointing out that without...
I don't think so. I think he, I think the zoning, the, uh, the code enforcement guide can review, review it and approve it with the conditions, as long as the recent conditions and the criteria.
Of the, of the home business?
Yeah.
No, home occupation.
Home occupation, I think home business does.
Home business, they got kind of planning board.
Okay.
These are not new. These are just updates on terms and...
Yeah, business always has to come from worst, so...
Well, that, that's fine, but we're here talking about them, and I question whether or not the single-family dwelling is appropriate for the home occupation as well. Take that as you.
I mean, I, I think that, and I, I would look at it as that point, they're coming in, you're coming in requesting a home business, not a home occupation. Unless the home occupation is defined as within the house, the business, the rest of you are looking at outside of the house, so you have to come before the board for planning board approval.
And that's, that's fine, as long...
Real quick question. I think that it's two ways to look at it, if you're trying to run the business, but also if you are a homeowner, you want protection from the person next door from doing things that, you know, you don't want to do. Um, you're in a residential area, so we're giving you permission to do certain things in a residential area, um, subject to certain criteria. And I think that's appropriate. If your neighbor is, you know, doing stuff there, there should be definitions of what he's allowed to do in a residential area. So we're looking at it from that point of view. I know you're looking at it from another point of view, the guy wants to do it. But if your neighbor's doing stuff that you don't like, you should have recourse, should be limits and definitions of what he can do as residential area. And that's really the viewpoint here we're taking.
Okay. Just wanted to point out the sort of the differences.
Looks like the only change, the covering one also mentions thirty percent of what we are adding is just a maximum of five hundred square feet.
Sure.
That's the only change.
And a number of non-resident employees.
Yeah, and the non-resident.
There was really none before, right to one.
Yeah.
Well, and I actually think that that's appropriate, because if you have more than one, then you probably either call on their home business or
Right.
Site review anyway, so I do think that that's appropriate. It's just where it is located, you know, on the property that I question, so, thank you.
We do have definitions of those two, home occupation, home business.
Yeah, I believe.
Okay.
Which maybe should have...
Picking our Ray again. If Ray had his office in the house, but then using a detached garage for half of it for his survey equipment, essentially, he doesn't fall under this.
Yeah. So before I got cut off, what I wanted to say is, under those definitions, should we have what you have to do? Do you have to go to code zoning planning board, you know, have that be clear? I was having, should my suit should change the words?
I'm not trying to cause problems.
No, no.
No, no, no.
I guess if anybody has a zoning state, if anybody has a zoning question, first thing is go to Johnny.
It already states that, you know, when you look at it, it says authorization for the home occupation may be granted by the building inspector without review by the planning board. So it already defines how it goes. And then, and the same thing under studying forces, at a minimum, the planning board must determine that all of the following conditions have been met, or such a permit may be authorized. So it define, it already delineates
Yep.
that process.
Yeah, I see where yours is coming from, though. It's like in the actual definition, it doesn't say that, like, if you're, I mean, it does in the order. In the arrangements.
Yeah.
Second. Joel, I'm at sixty-one explaining. By what you said about the neighborhood and things, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm for all that, because, but, again, when I was on the board, we, we came up with the home occupation, there wasn't anything at the time, and that's exactly what was trying to accomplish that. It fit in, and you didn't even know it was there, so what you're trying to do, I agree with that, so... It fit in, and you didn't even know it was there. So what you're trying to do, I agree with that, so.
But that, and that is also spelled out in our zoning ordinance or in our regulation under seven, three, parents, four, where there should be no display of goods or wares visible from the street. So it's, it is talking specifically about what that presentation looks like.
We're trying to allow somebody wants something out of the home to do that, that's the problem. So defining what it is. If you're doing something that's allowed, maybe neighbors have a problem with what's allowed, you're allowed to do it. So define, you know, we're making it clear is what we're trying to do.
If Ron wants to make nine irons to chip at weapons, he can do that.
Something, right?
So why we find all the golf balls in the lake?
Yeah. All right. Any other public comments related to amendment number two, zoning our article three?
I don't see anybody online either.
Hearing that, I'll close public comment. Looking for a vote from the board.
Can't be allowed.
Just go ahead. That's your right.
Alvin.
Now, bye.
Mr. G.I.
Yes. Okay, Donna, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. G.I.
Long day. Yes, yeah, we heard you. I just called you by the wrong name. I apologize. Article four.
Article four for zoning. Are you in favor, favor amendment number three to the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend section 7.457 regarding home businesses, clarify that the entire home business, including storage, is limited to an accessory or primary dwelling structure or an outside area which is adequately screened and reduce the amount of area the home business may occupy from 40, 500 square feet to 2,000 square feet or 10% of the lot, whichever is less.
Any comment from the board? Hearing that, I'll public comment.
I'm not sure if these, that, the, the numbers you came up with, I hope they're, that they're thought about a lot, reasonable. Yes, I totally agree that we need to do in this, because again, home occupation and things, it's like, I don't want to have my neighbor, I live in residential neighborhood, residential neighborhood, I want to live in a residential, that looks like residential neighborhood. I don't want to live on 125, I live on 125, but I want to live there. I don't want to all of a sudden wake up tomorrow morning and see somebody next door that has a business that looks like a business. Shouldn't happen that way, so. I support this too. Thank you.
Question, excuse me. Any other public comments?
I don't see anybody on three either.
Okay, is the, is the red box in comments section, is that just from in the comment section online, you see the, the bubble for people taking a comment, is that?
I showed on here, it might just be a love server, because when I see it on my computer, there isn't any recent comments, it was.
Okay, that's all I was trying to, just, when I see.
Nobody checked, yeah.
Somebody's in the chat. Hearing no public comment, I will close the public comment for article number four and vote from the board.
I can't be allowed.
Just go ahead. That's your right. Any other?
Alvin.
Now, bye.
Mr. G.I.
Thank you, Donna. Seven, zero. Article five.
Article five, second. Are you in favor of amendment number four to the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend the zoning map by changing tax map two, three, four, lots fifty, seven, fifty-seven point one, fifty-seven point two, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, seventy-seven, and seventy-nine from the town center to village.
I'll open public comment.
Again, I'm Joel Reynolds. Again, I was on the board and everything, and I was involved in this zoning. And one of the things that the consultants had identified before we started doing anything, was different areas of town, what, what was available to us for resources and things. And this area right here was specifically singled out that it should be areas that for clustered, I call it clustered development, so that to preserve, it was big open space in the land that was, could be still preserved with conservation land and open space design and stuff, that could feed down into the town center. And then it didn't become that. It became bigger than that. And then I had some clients that the same, later on that happened, and I came back before the planning board for these parcels. Was it all, they weren't all my clients, but most of, a bunch of these were, and we, I presented to the planning board that you can't do anything here, and, and your requirements are requiring us to put these boulevards in to even to have single residential houses. It was just ridiculous in that, that also by doing the zoning that they did with the town village and all that stuff, this town center, it was hundreds of acres. And Rochester's downtown is 40 acres. It was just extremely way out of proportion from town Barrington, trying to think that they could have a town center that was hundreds of acres. So I, I, I do support this too as well.
Ray, this is 338 Hall Road. I'm just looking for an explanation for the board as to what the purpose of this is and why is lot one dot one being left out as well?
Which one?
One dot one?
Dot dash, as the system.
So the original intent was when you looked at these, most of these were already developed, are developed out as residential lots in the sub-buts Oak Hill Road, that back section, which aligns much more with the current neighborhood feel of a village district than it does a town center district. It didn't, it, it wouldn't make sense. There's no, no further way to really develop those as a productive town center area.
They would have required mixed use too.
Yeah.
Instead of just residential. And six of these parcels, lots of Oak Hill, contain single-family homes, small lots.
I was here, says, put an explanation for it, what you're trying to do. But what was the reason for, even though it's not, it's one dot one.
No.
It has one, one dash, what was the purpose of that one being held out?
Stand, pull it up here quickly. One dot one is currently break. This is part of, I believe this is part of the dump development groups, parcel.
It is not.
Oh, 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 this is, this parcel is.
Is that the Henderson?
This is the Henderson parcel that's.
It's like two thirty-four seventies.
Could, could be. Well, there's two one dot ones. That's the first thing I noticed here. That's, the first one is the dump development. The second larger one back here is, I believe it's the Henderson. Well, they're, they're both listed as one dot one.
They're on different tax maps, that's why.
Right.
Yeah. And now, did the owners of these lots that you have on here, did, did they approach you, or did they agree to this, or is this something you guys are just pushing forward on?
Well, this actually was voted on, voted down in 2018 at the time.
But in most cases, John talked to the, talked to the.
Yes, you know, John can spoken with all the.
After the defeat, after it was defeated, John went and talked to.
I think he talked to most of them before too.
He did, did he?
Yes.
Well, I probably wanted some clarification, why it was voted down.
I think that, remember back then, there was draconian, I think there was, why it was some signs out that were misnumbered against the.
Oh, yeah.
So I think this is one of the ones that the sign listed as shouldn't happen, but was. Other one, yeah, other one.
Oak Hill, you're not going to be putting a drugstore or something large.
Oh, I'm not necessarily saying I'm against that. I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah.
That's all. Except that was it.
It is.
Yes.
I made that point. Shouldn't happen.
And, and that parcel is already, that parcel's actually already been to the CBA and was authorized or approved for a two-lot subdivision.
I, I did have a question. One of the lots here is lot 77, the Tibbetto lot.
Yeah, that's where the six.
On Route nine. If this passes, I mean, he no longer has to put commercial in. If he just reap lines, or, you know, an application under the new zoning for lot 77, if you just put single-family homes in there and not have to have a commercial component.
You know, weird.
It's a, it's a good question.
An excellent question. Say, he's already gotten.
Well, he can always pull it, right?
Yeah, you should always pull the bullet and say, I'm requesting you withdraw that.
So they'll have to wait till March to find out, but.
Yeah.
Pardon?
A good thing or a bad thing?
If he were to do that, I think it would be less expensive for him to do it, just put six single-family homes, and not worry about having to accommodate a, he was originally planning to set up a condominium, a commercial condominium on the bottom floors and residential condominiums on the top floors, which just seemed.
What is, is it, is it single-family?
Oh, it would be, yeah. Well, we've already approved it, though. We're now creating a non-conforming.
Well, you're creating an opportunity for him to go back and say, hey, I would like, I would request something different.
It's probably to go forward.
It was just the way they are.
Yeah. It's more, it's a very good question, because it's more the aspect of, are, are you trying to make it so that he would, that he could change the project, or are you, like, or would we leave it as it is?
Well, I think if it gets an opportunity to change it, but if it's a change of something more desirable for the town, it's like a thing.
It, so.
Because the, that's way outside of the town center.
Right.
I mean, the lot next to it is also in the village, just, it needs right on the edge.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if we give an opportunity to do something that's more desirable, why are we worried about that?
Well, I wouldn't worry about it, yeah. I think single-family homes without the, yeah, I mean, requiring him to rent out these teeny-weeny 400 square.
I agree. It gives them an opportunity for something we want to do.
Yeah, well, it also gives them the opportunity to move forward as existing. So you're going to have a combination of some mixed-use space with residential, with maybe three of them are all residential, and three decide, no, I really do want to have a.
Yeah, you could do that, right. It's good for lower options.
Right.
Good questions.
Those are thought we could table that one for next time to find out those answers, if he wanted to.
No, I think we should proceed with it, because I know people are affected.
And I don't, I don't think that, my concern is, if it goes that way, it doesn't bother.
Yeah.
I mean, we're giving them an opportunity to something.
Yeah, we can stay with this public project.
It's not like it's doing anything else. It gives them an opportunity to something we don't want.
Right. Just giving them an option to lessen this potential cost.
It's so much fun. One time, I might not do it again.
I'll be honest, I don't know how much it really lessens it. It's just the difference of, do you take down a wall in the basement, or do you leave up a wall in the basement?
Or that bottom floor could be covered in the home, too.
Right. That's what I'm saying. You're just taking down a wall. That's all you're doing.
Yeah. Okay. It's the headache of having to free the. Cash used.
Are we, who's going to rent floors, square feet, you know, 500 feet after the roof?
I will close public comment on that this time and request a vote from the board.
Can't be allowed.
Just go ahead. That's your right.
Alvin.
Now, bye.
Mr. G.I.
Next time. Seven, zero. Article six.
That's right. Article six. For zoning. Are you in favor of amendment five to the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board member, planning board to amend article 18 definitions for a tax building, a building having any portion connected by a common group, the previously which striked out?
Public comment. Hearing that, I will close.
I guess just for clarification. Again, Ray, this is 338 Hall Road. The definition of common roof, were you referring to that the roof line has to be continuous across?
No, I asked him that.
Okay. Because I'm just kind of thinking, there's some projects that I know of that they're.
The explanation actually was, somebody put a detached unit behind the house and ran a fence to the main house, called that a common wall. Creative, very creative.
So basically, it's connected by a roof.
Yeah, so it can be issued, yeah. It doesn't, I asked the same question.
The city of Rochester.
If I have a one-story and I have a two-story house, do I have to put the roof like this?
That's.
No, it just has to hit the rear wall.
Really more clarifying.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah.
People can interpret things certain ways, they'll try to.
Yeah, if it's defeated, we'll change it for the next time, so.
Yeah, it's another problem.
I'll close public comment. Board vote?
Can't be allowed.
Just go ahead. That's your right. Any other?
Alvin.
Now, bye.
Mr. G.I.
Article seven.
Article seven is zoning. Are you in favor of amendment number six to the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend section 20.8.4 regarding temporary signs to increase the allowance for additional temporary signs from 30 to 60 days prior to an election in all zoning districts, provided they comply with the requirements of the ordinance?
I'll just say, I think 30 days is fine. Public comment, or?
I think originally, Joe, we had like five central articles regarding signs.
I totally agree with this. The help, 30, 30 days is fine. It's an eyesore and stuff.
If they're political signs, it's a whole constitutional issue that we really can't do.
Yeah, and I understand that too, yeah, yeah.
That you're into that too, so.
But when you build signs out in the right way, that's political signs.
You mean, put signs out for an election, it's going to be six months?
Yep. Or they're, they're not temporary, they're stolen from around, but it turns right away too.
Yeah, once you put a footing in for a sign, it's.
So I think they have days, it's not even that, but.
I think it's going to be hard to enforce for 30 days, especially presidential elections, when candidates are putting it up. Just think it won't get enforced.
I think sixty will.
Yeah, I think it's more likely to.
Is it a feel-good amendment?
I don't see anybody online for public comment.
All right, I'll close public comment. Any further discussion? I'll call vote.
Can't be allowed.
Just go ahead. That's your name.
All right, ADI.
Alvin.
Now, bye.
Mr. G.I.
I'm, I'm really with you here on this one, but I'm going to, I'm going to be flexible. Because I have a very same flexibility in some other areas.
Article eight for zoning. Are you in favor of amendment number seven to the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to increase the required lot size in the general residential, neighborhood residential and village residential districts from 80,000 square feet to 120,000 square feet and increase the required amount of frontage in the GR, NR, and BD residential districts from 200 feet to 250.
Public comment?
Joe. Yes, I'm, this is swaying me over, but I'm not sure. Can you explain to me why we're trying to do this? We've had this, you know, this lot sizing for, for off. We've had this, you know, this lot sizing for, for a long, a long, a long time, seems to work and stuff. And to do this, I don't. I, I couldn't come up with a reason why we're doing this other than growth control, so. Could you explain to me why we're doing that?
So. There've been a lot of people who have come in complaining or voicing their opinion that Barrington is losing its quaint rural character. And as we continue to grow, that continues to be part of that issue, so if we look at how do we address that? It 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 addresses the growth aspect of it in the sense that you won't see as many lot size lots put into a into the general residential areas. When you look at conservation subdivisions and items like that, it will stop some of the mass influx that happens with those lots and it helps keep a little bit more of that that feel of a quaint area that Barrington has been or had been for years and as land gets swallowed up, up and down the seacoast and anybody who's lived south of the border sees what that sprawl looks like across all those other areas as well.
So it certainly is growth control. But it doesn't affect me at all, doesn't affect me, I don't have two hundred acres, I'm lips on the line. But and what you're saying is people said that they, it's those people that moved in here with the same zoning that's been doing what frontage, they said they don't like that, that's what they moved in, that's what it looks like, that's what we have. So we're going to make it different than what it looks like now by doing that.
Another aspect I was thinking about is when the developer comes in, he comes in with a yield plan. Yes.
I heard that, I heard that.
And then he takes those measurements and puts it in a conservation mechanism. We've seen some examples where they just stuff as many houses as they can. This would reduce that. It's the yield plan, which is a yield plan.
My question is, as a defect, not the person who has twenty five acres and wants to stick how many, however they hold it. Yet the person has another house and then has several lots already listed as a lot.
Yeah. That's.
They're going to be a scratch of lots.
So, so another problem. Keep a child small time community.
Right, if we're, if the whole intent of zoning, which we've talked about in these prior articles, is to build out a downtown center, then your, your general like influx of residential, commercial is, is in that downtown center, is in the town center and the village district where you have the ability to put density. And in our general residential, which should be our area where you, where you maintain your rural character feel, this is the way to help establish that and maintain that rural character that everybody moved to Barrington for at some point.
So two, two things, the, the yield plan, I agree, so why not change the way you do the yield plan instead? So you don't get as many lots, maybe have a percentage that less than that. Again, it's been this way for a long, a long time. Want to feed it. And eighty thousand square foot lot is plenty big, it's, it's a nice looking lot, I think, I think.
I think some of the thinking was if you put a house on two acres, you have a certain look to it. You have that extra acre, you may save preserved wood trees. May not want all three acres of white land lawn. And I mean, that's one aspect I think people were thinking of. But I was, I actually wanted to use the yield plan's effect on conservation.
I've had a couple recently, you know.
I, I agree, and, and I think in, in, yeah, sure, that's what you get, you know, that look you're getting now, that's great. So maybe just that instead of doing this, it seems a bit, this two hundred foot, eighty thousand, this worked for years and it's makes a nice looking lot, this, people don't need to have three acres, it's a lot. Still people.
Well, some people.
You know what it's going to be like to, to anybody to buy a lot that's three acres now in Barrington? Bowling, bowling. You know, so, and, and again, you know, I, I like to have my kids be able to keep on being doing stuff that I've done and stuff. And it's, and it's not that they can do that stuff anymore.
It's kind of hard.
It's, it's worse and this is going to make it even worse. This is going to be crazy, so.
And get voted down.
Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you.
Again, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering, I own a small business here, necessarily live here, but as most of you know, we do have a considerable amount of family lands here. A few, three, I guess, pointed topics. First, I I understand the purpose and I understand your comment specifically. The three professionals that have been speaking the most here tonight. We are hired by residents of Barrington to do the best we can for them and to create as much value for them as possible.
Sure.
And some of that has to do with, you know, family inheritance and, and other economic factors, not necessarily related to developers outside of the town of Barrington. With that said, I hope that all of you recognize and I have a respect for all of you, you're all smart enough to know that you are essentially reducing each individual landowner's value by nearly fifty percent by doing this, by taking this one action. You're increasing each one of the lot sizes by fifty percent and you're taking frontage and requiring a twenty five percent multiplier on that as well. That will have a huge impact on people's land and people's land value. Conversely, when we start talking about larger developments and larger subdivisions and outside developers, we keep pointing south to areas for reference to other ordinances and, and other towns and municipalities. You don't have to look too much further south from here to know that some of those towns do have larger lot sizes. And the underlying va- land value that goes into building a residential home is skyrocketing because of these very changes that they tried to institute to slow growth. And throughout my career, we've been battling slowing growth and battling affordable housing and they are in conflict with one another. And if you are looking to find ways of developing Barrington better, there are better ways to do that than this type of change. Calculations. calculation based conservation subdivisions instead of yield plan based conservation subdivisions is just one minor example. The second or third point that I'd like to, to make is, I don't know if this is going to, and I'm not asking a question that I have the answer to. I don't know if this creates a conflict now with your backlot subdivision or your neck portion of the subdivision, because I think that, that ordinance specifically talks about lots that have frontage between two hundred and two hundred and fifty feet. And so you might want to make sure that this ordinance change doesn't then conflict with that ordinance forward. I thought I had a question about how this works, how this is applied to subdivision regulations. But I think those are all percentage based, so we'll know, because you have to have a certain percentage be upland of the lot and a certain percentage of that be contiguous, so I think because they're percentages, they would then apply to these changes as well. Thank you.
General comment on that. You talked about value, but you talked about it from a taking value but also an adding value standpoint and that, that's exactly part of this, this whole board had as a conversation is, there's that initial thought that it takes value away, but the reality of it is because it now looks at the, the size of the lot and make, will make that land, again, more valuable in Barrington, so you're actually creating value add growth for people with the land that they already own. And as you pointed out, if you look not much further south than that, where it is, what do you see? But you see land value that is significantly greater than here.
But we're in Barrington, that's all we gotta worry about.
You're right.
I've worked in the land use office almost twenty years and there hasn't been one person that came and said, I want bigger lots. People come in, I got five acres or I got four acres, I need to subdivide or I can't afford to stay here. Forget about the little people.
That's a tax problem, Barbara.
No, that is a problem that you're not taking care of the people in town and this board needs to start doing that. You guys are doing it for your own benefit.
It's not, it does.
Yes, it is.
Benefits the people of Barrington.
It benefits somebody that has four acres, sorry, you can't subdivide that because the planning board changed the rule to three acres. Well, you can't take four and get two lots out of it. That's my own opinion, sorry, guys.
I've got to say, I, I had a brief conversation with John and I think one of the things that we neglected this was looking at the complete zoning package. And I can't go into specific details because he rattled things off so fast, I couldn't follow him. But regarding duplex lots and other lots, this is going to have an impact on a lot more zoning ordinances that we haven't considered and I think before we do something like this, I think we have to take a much broader look at zoning and where this will affect it before we approve it.
That kind of aligns with my thoughts when I came to the meeting is that it'd be really helpful to have some data from the master survey update next year and that maybe we'll get more input from residents. I've had really mixed comments from people who live in the general.
I think you should put this off to another year. Can we vote on it?
Yeah.
Vote on it, sure. We should vote.
Yeah, I think we have to, right?
Yeah. But.
I'm just seeing you betting online.
I'll wish you both.
Before you close public comment, don't see me online.
Okay. Close public comment from this point. Roll call vote.
No, yeah, happy hour.
Just a lot, just your, no.
Any of them, no. Al right. Now, bye. Voice, all right. That's always.
Oh, God. I, I, I really think we should wait on this, I really do, I mean, I'm here in conflict. I understand, I, I for one don't want Barrington to be a townhouse haven, I don't. But I also heard some good points tonight. You know, like Barbara, like Chris, I have a lot of respect for Chris. But I also know that Chris is a contract, you know, is an engineer, so he probably would sigh for that more, so, but I, is there, can I just say I don't want to vote because I, I really feel we should wait on this, I really feel that there's more to it. Andy, I am totally for you, honey, I know. I don't want to see it grow where we have condos all over the place, I don't want to be, I don't want to be Dover, okay? I don't. But I also understand. You know, the value of our land and everything. So I don't know. What do I do? Can we, can we, can we table this?
That would be a no vote.
That would, yes, you would just vote no and we'll talk about it for a year.
Ah, jeezum. Um, okay, no, nay, whatever you want to call it, oh my God.
It's one to six, I would make a motion that we pull this article from.
The ballot.
Yes, thank you.
Somebody's.
That's a motion.
Oh, sure, I'll second it.
Roll call vote.
Happy hour. I.
Just a lot, you test your eye.
Now, I.
Mr. G I.
Seven is in favor of pulling it from the. The president's motion.
What?
I voted, that would be seven, I voted in favor of putting it forward when we didn't, I made a motion to pull it and I voted in favor of pulling it from the ballot. So there will be no article E.
Right.
Or so.
I had one to six.
That's right.
Okay, okay.
One to six and then, and then we made a roll call vote to remove it from the ballot.
Right.
And we voted seven oh in favor of removing it from the ballot.
Remember, I wasn't, I wasn't, I took it from, took it off the ballot.
It does not take it off the ballot.
This way, this way it does take it off.
Notation and Barbara. Barbara's discussion really made.
The vote just would put it on the ballot showing that the board was in favor one to six or again, it's six to one.
But you're.
But by pulling it, by making a motion to pull it, it means we don't have to even.
Just go next.
But we could, you guys could work on it during.
I do think it needs to be worked on because the problem is when you look at zoning, you can't put the bullet back in the gun after it's already.
Make one comment just. Or comment?
Sure. It's not really, it's more of a suggestion. What I see on Facebook and what I hear from comments, it's not really the residential lot or someone dividing a lot.
Did I at least ask you, you come up here since we're like, like the wheels are floating off to the bus.
My car will pick up.
Um. I think from what I see as a professional of doing this, it's not really the someone dividing a lot in half that's creating the problem, it's what they see on, on Route nine across the middle school. That's what people are getting frustrated about, they're seeing though, so if you're going to be relooking at the zone, you should be looking at what those are kind of creating, it's, it's not really the two acre lot that's the problem. There really isn't and it's going to have a huge impact on town of.
Well, we did change the zoning last year.
But that's the one that I would recommend.
Those people would only be able to put, I think, seven units in or eleven, something like that. In the eighties. Could be in the eighty that are destined to go almost across the middle of us.
Right.
I think they'd be down to twenty one.
Twenty, yeah, twenty one works, right.
I think those are the.
So that.
Areas that need to be looked at more.
Good reaction.
Yeah.
But of course, that was approved by the voters in two thousand and seven to. And you know that density.
This, I think this is the challenging part when you look at this is a lot of times we don't know the impact or we, we know that there could be an impact, but until somebody brings a project or a plan forward, you don't see the impact and by the time you see the impact with regard to lot size, that's where we're going to be, where all of a sudden everything's been divided out at that point and you've hit saturation and you can't change it at that point, you can't go back and do anything different. And if you look at it, like you look at projects that are coming forward where snowmobile trails are being shut off, the access to other recreation areas are being shut off and it creates, they create conservation subdivisions and recreation, but they're not creating recreation that has been the standard or the norm around here and they're creating that impact to people who do like those other activities, that they no longer have a place left to do them. So that was the basis behind it then. When I was on the select board, I can't tell you how many meetings we had where folks were coming in and they were in an uproar about their neighbor shooting in their backyard where they have every legal right to do it, but they didn't like it. And by having a larger lot size and creating a little bit more buffer and distance on that, it just moves some of that noise out away and allows people to practice.
That's not going to do a good shooting. No, far away, you hear it, Ken.
I hear it. But it, 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 when you think about the distance, it only has to be three hundred feet from a home, like by creating a larger lot size, you create a little bit more buffer around that. So it's not as proper, you'll hear it, you're just not going to be as close in proximity to it. So that was the basis behind why we were, or why I had proposed to them.
But I think it's a bouncing next, I'll mention that. I think people pay more affordable housing, the people move into the community, they want it to get better and be more desirable and stuff like that. And that works against affordable housing. If you make a community better, you make it more desirable and your property values improve, that is. Affordable housing is based on market prices, if somebody builds a cheaper, they still migrate at market price, if town gets better, more desirable prices go up. Affordable housing becomes more and more of a problem, but you know, that people who want their town to be better or invest in the town, there's nothing wrong with that attitude either. there's nothing wrong with that attitude either. So there is a cost of that.
Yeah. I, I mean, ideally, you're always trying to work to.
Improve the town.
To improve the town and by good, good improvement, good process actually drives the lower tax rate, which drives the value higher, thus making, sadly, making it less affordable to some aspects of the population.
And physical systems, stuff like.
Yep.
I'm also going on, but it's development here where they're going from seven fifty to eight fifty for homes, which are way out of line from what had been selling in Barrington. But everybody else building homes now are gonna market it at that price because they know that that's the price point.
On the rental.
And that's with a, yeah.
Rental properties.
Well, it was across the middle school with twenty five hundred dollars a month to twenty seven hundred and fifty dollars a month.
I, I apologize. We're, we've kind of gotten a bit off track from what we're here for, so I'm gonna rein this back in so that we're not here until eleven o'clock at night, but Barbara was requesting a short. Too late for that. Uh, moving on. So we voted on all of those. Everything's set there. First public hearing, please. Preliminary conceptual site for Tyler and Katie Rand, especially with the board.
I know, that's bad. You did it for the board. The chairman asked about received application. We did receive the application last. But it was. Meeting. The board voted that it was incomplete. So, um, discussed that was to come back for a preliminary discussion so that way they can be better prepared to see what the board wants to do, to see more than. And like, just preliminary, this is a preliminary discussion.
Yep.
Kind of like what you did for the peach farm, that to see like, you know, what he's doing, what additional things.
Right. They were like the last.
Right. So again, my, my name is Tyler Rams. I lived in Barrington since two thousand and three. We own two, two lots. It was subdivided prior to us purchase. It is, and we have, since our last meeting, I've talked to the state officials about, so we have our property on Ham Road. One thirty-two Ham Road is my current house. It's four acre lot. That's not what I'm here to talk about. Here to talk about my other lot, which I own, which is the adjacent barn. Sharing a driveway to my house. So what we are here to try and do is to have a conference center out of our barns. The barn is two hundred years old and we have used it a number of times for different functions. We've had weddings there. We've had a number of different events, boy scout events and, and many different things over the, over the years. We bought the house in two thousand and three. We bought the barn in two thousand and nine. So trying to go forward, we, we are trying to figure out through, we are interested in being able to do this for profit, be able to make money from this as a side hustle. I work at Port Sun Devil Shipyards, my full-time job, and trying to go about it the right way. So here to try and get permission, trying to fill out the right application, the right documents to submit to the board to give you the right information for your approval. I have conditional use permit that I've, I have a draft copy with me. I've also have a checklist, which I feel like the checklist, much of that doesn't seem to apply. Parts of it might, parts of it might not because of the, the barn is an existing barn that I'm trying to use. And I also have a number of waivers that I've also written up for different things. So don't want to take up too much of your time. I would like to be able to answer questions and be able to prevent, present the right information to the board.
Go ahead, Andy, question?
Yes.
My question is this. I'm not background fire safety. You list pretty much cover almost every event that potentially you could have. Each, not each, but several these event present the difficult fire safety situations. Like birthday parties.
Sure.
Things of that nature because you're talking open flames in an older structure, even if you renovated, it's still an old structure. The other thing is decorations. Put flammable decorations inside this thing and, and a batch gets to it or something gets to it, this is gonna go quick. So from my perspective, the occupancy, I feel the occupancy is not the biggest question by a tree. I think the bigger question was decorations, the open flame, because birthday parties bring open flames in other particular, but you cover. And the reason I ask is you say it's a small business. Kind of like a play on words because a small business, you're naming so many different occupancy, you cover it almost everything. You know, from weddings to the weights, like theater. Now, I don't know what you mean by theater. You mean somebody brings in a screen and you play it.
Yeah, I have a, I have a drop down screen. I've had movie theaters for my kids.
Yeah.
In there. The, the primary function has been, we, we wanted to have a wedding venue similar to the Peach Farm. That's like the big thing. I did want to open it up and I'm trying to not say I'm having only weddings there. It's not my intention to just have weddings. I want to be able to have the boy scouts in there and, and other things. So yes, I, it was definitely a big wide approach. I am, as far as the fire safety, I, my, both my parents were on the fire department. My dad was the fire chief. I've been a firefighter since I was eighteen. I've been on Barrington firefighter, Barrington Fire since I was about two thousand and seven. I'm, I'm working with Chief Walker and I'm missing the meeting tonight to be here. This is more important to me. So very familiar, very comfortable, understand the fire safety and I have had preliminary discussions with Chief Walker on the building and continue to work with him on all of those aspects.
Yeah, I mean, I would ask, I mean, he knows. Just ask him what fire safety measures you should have in there.
Yeah.
A lot of something.
Yes. And I, I will be working with him. He has, he told me that he has been burned in the past where he wants to. As far as occupancy, I was talking about occupancy with him. He will not provide an occupancy until after being approved for a conference center. Because for different reasons.
Thank you.
I have been talking.
Steve, that you've done some. You know, ask for a waiver because of the parking lot, we have a parking lot.
I do not want it to be a gravel parking lot. I want it to be on grass that's existing.
Grass, okay. Which is what we've done before in some of the situations. You also, I guess you're gonna put a T intersection into Ham Road.
But I would say that it's. Right, because that was one of the.
We talked about that last.
Road, yep. So my driveway.
Instead of having to go all the way over toward your house and that's it.
The driveway, there's two axes to my, my road. My driveway is shared.
Yeah.
This one is roughly at an angle.
Yeah.
And so the, the concern there, I have a rock garden currently shown right here.
Oh, yeah, adjacent to the barn.
Yep, and that's, that would be removed and allowing for more perpendicular access. And then my plans would be to have the driveway come over here and the parking lot to be over.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, while we're on talking, the waiver requirement there, the concern I have is, you know, parking in a grassy area, you have weddings and stuff, people wearing high heels, raining, stuff like that. That's kind of an undesirable situation, I think, you know, people's crests get muddy. I think if you're looking for that waiver, to me, you should be looking for an unloading area close by, paved unloading area where people could stop and get off, get out of the vehicle, let somebody go park rather than have everybody trump through the grass. You know, potentially muddy and stuff like that. If you plan the event, you don't know if it's gonna rain the day before or whatever. You know, having everybody park in the grass and have them all walk to the barn, I just don't think that's a, you know, sort of a societal situation.
Yeah.
It's a problem.
Yep.
Can you show, so you've got a paved handicap. Is there space there to allow for drop off?
Yes. So currently, basically what I show here is the black is all my current driveway existing now. The property line is this line here. So this entire side of my barn shown up here is currently paved. And so what I've done in the past for when I've had my grandmother and other elderly people here, I'm able to drive them within feet and technically I drive my cars into the barn, so you can drive up to the barn. So that's my handicap access in for, for. Yes. So this whole area between my house and here would be my intention to have the handicap parking along here, which is about seven cars can easily fit here, where I'm gonna put the non-handicap parking over here on the grass.
I think I was looking for a more extended landing area for people along there.
Yeah.
Because you don't want cars backing up on the road where they can't.
Yeah, if you take the rock garden out and fill that in with pavement to make the T intersection with Ham Road, you would have plenty of area to have cars pull over. And the entrance would be on the, I know you've got an entrance for the handicap people, but on the other end of the barn, posted to the parking area, that would be another entrance.
Yep.
So dropping people there could just walk around into either, either.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. So if it's a pressure of a waiver, I would like to see something like that.
Yeah. Yes, I have unloading area.
Is your intention to add some pedestrian doors to the barn?
So I currently have three doors to the barn. There's two. There's this large door here, roughly eleven foot square, and the other side has another eleven foot square. Going away, there're technically two doors here. I'm in process of redoing this side there. Today, there's two doors, those, my intention is to have those go away. I have another door that's kind of hidden. You can see it right here. There's just a personnel door. There's also going to be a door that goes into the, was I calling my workshop over here? It's gonna be an attached section, but that's not for an emergency egress per se. I work with the fire chief and especially as he's built, as he's going through this, if he says I need additional doors more than the twenty-two square linear feet, twenty-two linear feet this there on opposite sides of the building, so I could do that.
It's the door that the existing, I'm gonna call it a man door because the other doors are not man doors, they're not pedestrian doors.
Yep.
Is the existing man door an in swing or an out swing?
Out swing. Swings out.
Okay. So.
That'd be a fire code thing.
Right. When I look at this, like you plan on putting a hundred and fifty people in there and if it's a cool day, the big doors are gonna be drawn. I would bet money on that one. Like, so you've gotta have at least two means of egress, if not more, based on where people.
Where this monster bugs you go with?
Bugs you.
Potentially. We don't want the boss and everything, the lights and everything.
So the, the, the doors on the side are currently a swing outdoors and it's my intention to be able to have those, my dad built similar ones that are, have that cam over, it's a cam over air piston. It's like five pounds of force can open it and they swing out and hopefully fifty pounds hold it out. But I haven't gotten to that site yet. But all, all of the fire safety as far as like egress and everything like that, I would absolutely be working with the and I think it would be required prior to the fire chief allowing for an occupancy to have the fire codes there. I mean, that's all part of the occupancy permit, I believe.
Well, and all that stuff normally, like when people come up with their design plan, we come in and they have a design plan that they show us. It says, okay, here's the intention, here's the way everything's laid out, here's, like, we usually get a full set of plans when someone's doing some larger development like that. And I, I'll be honest, I put what you're talking about more into the, hey, I'm gonna have four weddings a year here and that's my intent because this seems like based on what you're describing and all the uses, the goal is to have this thing rented out pretty routinely.
I, I'm looking at like four weddings a year. I'm looking to be able to pay the taxes and stuff, so it is not my intention to have this a, a every weekend thing. As far as, I, I understand it is the existing barn, so it's, it, I can modify things as needed and, and come up with plans to address the concerns. It is, it's, it's a barn that's, that's been here and trying to utilize that.
Yes.
Utilize that barn. I, I just, my concern is, is I don't want to
be part of the group that gives approval to where you end up with a massive fire event and there's a significant loss of life type of that. It, it's about, are we doing what's right, truly right for the purpose and the community as opposed to just it just helps some guy piss piss, so that I'm not trying to, to downplay that. I think that's important for you, but the people that are gonna be in there, what's important to me. You know, life safety is it's an important variable for that.
Absolutely.
For twenty-five years.
Yep, absolutely. And, and I'm here to try and meet those challenges, address those challenges and, and get a satisfactory answer on those and to be above board on having events there with the right oversight and to do this all correctly. So I want to address exactly your concern and, and, and.
Ask a clarification, sort of. So working with the applicant and then going to the board, what I'm hearing is he would like the applicant to get engineered plans of the building.
Will you have this conceptual at this point?
This is conceptual. I'm just trying to get clarification because we've, like, we, looking at previous cases that we've done, we're trying to help the applicant as best as we can, as well as the board. We looked at the Peach Farm, they didn't have a a survey plan that was acceptable at the board at the time. I know each project is different. And that's what we've said to the applicant, but are you looking for more, a more formal, more than just a plan? Because it, it sounds like he's trying to meet all this, but how does he come about meeting it with the board? Be this more as a larger site plan because he wanted to come in for conditional use as a, a conference center to have those plans versus what he's working in his current establishment.
It's, it's similar to the Peach. Peach Farm issue that they came in initially with a preliminary idea. Said, well, we'd like to see you looking for this, 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 and this, and they came back, came back again, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure that if, if that's what kind of the board feels like they want something a little bit more.
A lot of discussion about the barn, Peach Orchard. I think we just saw there was a ramp that opened to a double set of doors. They were concerned about parking and lighting around the area, lighting in the parks, these were temporary lighting things, but.
Okay, so I'm making sure I'm on the same page, that's all.
We didn't require a, a, a plan set for the structure.
Right, I just want to make sure I was.
But if you're on the fire. And the chief is not gonna let you do anything. You know, the job, the work, the buildings.
The Peach Orchard came in though is, was not billing it as a conference center, did not have built-in bathrooms. They're just saying, hey, we're looking at doing some accessory weddings here. This is what we're talking about.
I think.
But that's the thing, you, there is no, I would love to come here and talk about wanting a, a wedding venue. But unfortunately, as I understand it, the Peach Art, the Peach Farm had to come here as a conference center because that is the only thing that's, I'm not looking for a restaurant, I'm not looking for anything else. The, the conference center is the wrong term that I would come here for, but I don't have a wedding venue.
They didn't have bathrooms, the, the people who've been at the wedding, they had some food in, the alcohol in, in the bathroom.
There's no commercial kitchen.
Right.
Since I'm not, you're not having a bar venue, a bar service.
You don't have anything to do with that.
That's, so I'm trying to be able to have events.
So most of the events would be small ones, as you were saying.
Absolutely.
Twenty, thirty people.
Absolutely. That's some of the ones like a, a business in town wanted to have a venue, a, a place to have a, a meeting from like ten to noon. Outside of their. outside of their work. And it's exactly what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
The Zumba class that was in the parking lot of, uh, the middle street, uh, the middle school, be able to offer that to them.
Just a quick question, what, what do you mean by live performance?
A band.
A band?
A band, or, yeah, that's, that's what I had in mind.
My, my question, this is very fond question, my question about having a band, is, uh, ensure that a band doesn't have a, a, it's like, yeah, but then the fire.
Station nightclub fire.
Yeah, the station nightclub would have shot off, literally shot off fireworks inside, killed, I mean, killed.
Yeah. I was having one at that time.
I, I was living right up the road from, from there when it happened, shooting.
Which?
It, uh.
Warwick?
It was Warwick, it was Warwick, it was, uh, uh, Whitesnake or.
Which was, yeah.
But no, absolutely.
He left it at home.
Yeah, I wouldn't have probably had, I'd known they were playing, but I didn't know they were there that night.
No, I, I agree, sir. Yeah, but that's, that, when I said life is Warwick, so that's what I had in mind is.
I don't know if you meant that, I understand, it could be need to live.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, when I came in also, the idea was to be broad in what I was talking about, not to be specific, because I, so I tried listing everything that I've done.
Yeah, but, just, I have been, I'm looking at her, I'd like to see something more concrete, at least, chief, or as far as what he's looking for.
Okay, I can absolutely talk to him, um, about what, in, in, in terms of fire protection.
Fire protection. Yeah, what he is gonna want, right, for you.
Yep.
Once you go allow, once you.
All right, well, after.
So a lot of that, when I had some discussions with him on that, I was talking about sprinkler system, and he referenced this building, and this building doesn't need to require sprinkler system, so he was not worried about a smaller building such as my barn.
Right, certainly affordable.
But I think egress, I think egress is.
Lighting's a thing too.
Yep.
The entrances and the drop off area, now you're gonna have lighting table on the side of the barn for drop off area.
Even the parking lot, even the parking areas, it's light.
The Peach Orchard, we're gonna get portable lighting systems instead of expensive permanent ones. If they, uh, in a diagram, uh, version from a depression operation, if they're ten, fourteen feet high, so they kind of lit up, and there was a cone you showed on this plan. Also, it's our lighting guy here.
Yep. Um, so, conditional use, I believe I do need to submit this, everyone here has a clue to that. Do I need to submit the check please, check sheet?
Yeah.
And, and you can write where it's not applicable, or.
Yes.
You don't have to answer it.
You can request waivers if you see something like, hey, this is very, like, this is a hardship, we, I'm requesting a waiver from this section, this area.
There's a number of items in here that seem not applicable, but.
Yeah, you can put.
N S will help.
And it happens on, that's right. Any suggestion, time, time, chief, that's a good idea, because if you're gonna get an occupancy limit, that limits your parking.
Absolutely.
You know, it's, once you get that locked in, then you get to park and manage.
And, and unfortunately, again, I can't, pretty much, chief, he won't do that until after board's approval.
Well, that's. I can cut down to deciding on what you're looking at there and then creating an occupancy plan on it. The occupancy plan permit is all based on what your intended uses and what the appropriate NFPA code's on for. So if you look at, at, uh.
I know it's, it's fifteen, fifteen square feet per person, based on, and so he ran over some quick numbers, and that came out to a hundred and fifty-three people. Obviously, the posts that are inside the barn make a difference, the egress makes a difference, and he has to do a walkthrough to understand the nuances of if there's areas that are inaccessible.
Right.
That reduces the size.
Tables make a difference, and that's square footage per person as opposed to just chairs. Because there are situations where you can drop down as low as four suite or four square feet per person, or four, yeah, four square feet per person. But it's primarily in, um, when setting up for, uh, meetings or things like that, where it's just chairs and then designated aisle ways, as long as you're able to show all that, that's, if you can explain that out and say, these are what the uses are, here's what my limits are, you can tie that in where you're gonna, your occupancy permit will be based on that, and you're gonna say for each one of these classifications, this would be what my designated occupancy load would be.
I did remember seeing that when I was over at the Peach Farm, just remember seeing the ones, one sheet, but, okay, very good.
I, I have the same thing with the fire chief, like, we have meetings in our cafeteria space at work, and what it did is did the little calculation, so he had essentially a geared meal plan for the cafeteria as to how many people could be designated in there, and if you were to walk into my work, you would see it posted in the cafeteria with an occupancy load.
Perfect.
For those spaces.
Yep, okay, so low, low calculation.
Yep, and it's different on if I have tables and tables out versus just having chairs put out.
Yeah, if you look at comments he made for the Peach Orchard, maybe you said as basis.
Yep, I've reviewed the Peach Orchard application.
And his, his comments, which were probably deeper, when he communicated with them than what we saw, so.
Um, is there other items? That I can answer for you guys? Application, anything else you're looking for?
Well, the lighting plan is gonna show, you know, parking, but it's also, you gotta show on the building, we have lighting, so it'd be that stuff as well, so it's not just a parking lot, it's gonna be, it's just, has to be defined, located, we show where they are in the building.
Okay. Anything else?
Are you gonna have any water, are you gonna have water in the building? I would think you would have to for cleanup.
Uh, there will be water into the addition, the barn is not insulated, and so, um, there will be water to the addition, but not in the barn proper.
Addition, can you clarify that for me?
Sure, um, currently the barn is fifty-five feet by thirty-eight, existing structure, it's two hundred and twenty-five years old. I have an application for a permit and construction has started on addition on the north side of the building that is fifty-three by thirty. It is slab engraved, and that will have two, two bathrooms and a workshop and a single bedroom apartment inside that.
And that's pending before the CBA?
No, that is not pending, that is, that is, hey, that is a, um, approved dwelling for this.
There's no dwelling on this block. Right, because this is a separate lot.
It is a separate lot.
This becomes your residential dwelling.
It is, it is, it is, yep, correct, yep. Now, I am going before the zoning board also for mixed use. If, if this board approves a conference center inside the barn, then in order to have someone stay in the apartment, I would need to have mixed use approved by the zoning board, as I understand it. Um, did that answer your question, ma'am?
Um, it, it does somewhat, and you add a little more on to there, which I'm sure the other guys will pick apart, but, um, also trash removal, I'd, I'd be looking for that. Um, I mean, these, these are just things you probably already know, but you did ask what we might be looking for, trash removal. Um, of course, um, the lighting, like, it's already been mentioned. And are you planning to bring, whoever has the venue there, are they bringing all the supply in themselves and taking it back? Um, are, I think I heard you right, you're not going to cook on the premises, am I right?
Correct. Um, as far as trash, I have a dumpster currently, it's my plan to keep the dumpster. Uh, and, um, no cooking, and maybe I missed your other question. Was there another question there?
No, that was it, thank you.
Last question.
Yeah.
Where it's gonna be a, you're gonna go for mixed use occupancy.
Correct.
How does that affect the fact that sprinklers, does it affect sprinklers?
Um, I believe it does not, it's, it's for the fire chief to answer, I would say, but.
Well, ultimately sprinklers come under the guy in the building, I think.
Okay.
Ultimately.
Okay.
So I think John would be the one that has that.
I am, I am also working with John.
Yeah, because if you put a sprinkler system in there, you have no heat in it per se, you're liking it in crisis.
I understand.
You're looking at, well, you're done, you're looking at, uh, detectors, which will trip the system.
Yep. Look, I, I, I understand.
So that's a good question for John or Will.
Yeah, it's gonna be charged, because you have to have a, you have to have a pressure system.
That?
It's gotta be charged, you have to have a pressure.
Well, it is. Charge would happen as soon as the.
Right, the head pops, that head pops in.
Yeah, yeah.
Holds back.
Yep, no, I'm familiar with that, and, and I guess I would have thought it was, I, I'm working with John Hawkins, I'm also working.
I'll show you if they have a model, say.
And just to note too, and for some reason he doesn't have a mixed use, he can still ask for the reuse for the barn, the reason he's asking for the reuse is.
One question I did have is, is, uh, you know, I was a little confused by the questionnaire that commonly asks questions for the planning board, zoning board, uh, because I'm going for mixed use before the zoning board and for, um, uh, permission to have a conference center, is there one that has to come before the other? Which one is that?
I would think you would need your CBA approval before you come back before us, because you want to have your complete package that you're having us review.
Okay, that's different from what I'd heard before, very good.
You can do concurrently, um, different applications at the same time, depending on what you're doing. So when he first came through for an application, we didn't realize, they originally was just our primary dwelling, so he didn't need CBA, but then he was talking about after submitting his application to the plan, or initially, they, they wanted to have other opportunities to, to a wedding venue, so other, like, his kids when they grow up, can they stay there?
So, and it's zoning board first?
Yeah, so.
Uh, I would be, then you're coming back saying, look, the zoning board's already given me relief in these areas, just saying granted it, so we're not hunting back, you back and forth between boards.
Thank you very much. Any other questions before I leave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. All right. On the list. Um, items continue, one, ten, dash nineteen, and twenty, dash DR, dash twenty-two, dash a lot line adjustment, which was approved, nine, six, for a waiver request. The floor is yours.
Good evening, again, I'm Ray Visson from Stonewall Irving, I'm representing Christine and Brett Austin. He said, last, um, month we were back here, we had the lot line adjustment, and six, the lot line adjustment was, um, approved, but we need to ask for continuance on nine, six. During that meeting, there was concern with the fifteen-foot reduction request, uh, for the wetland buffer. Um, we were kind of trying to figure out what would be, um, more likely to what the board would like in, for my client. Um, during that discussion, there was, Mr. Driscoll had asked about, um, one location, so I did provide an exhibit, exhibit number two, which kind of shows that location as he was, um, requesting. Couple issues with that to the location is that location encroaches into the side slope of the state of the subject design. Um, it forces all the drainage, um, from the driveway to be directed, directed to the wetland. It increases the amount of impervious surface to thirteen hundred square feet, and still impacts the wetland buffer by a hundred and eighty square feet. Um, per the code, you know, point five, parentheses three, we still need relief from the driveway. I did go out and meet with my client, and we discussed several other options and issues, um, with the location, and came up with the exhibit number one and what is shown on the, on the plan. Um. I know there was discussions about relocating the retainable leach field, but that, that would be, um, a huge unjust expense for the client, and, um, we're talking with my attorney, the financial is a hardship. But that's a little bit up for debate, I guess. Um, the location that we're, we're showing right now is as close to the retinal wall as we can get, uh, but it still allows for a swell, uh, between the retinal wall and the garage that would allow for the water to be drained, you know, in both directions. So when water coming out from that area would go to the right of the garage and off to the left, so it's reducing how much water is directly going to the wetland, and so it will go to the lawn itself. Um, this location does not impact the side slope of the leach field. The this location reduces the amount of impervious surface and the amount of runoff towards the well. The impact to the buffer is two hundred and forty square feet, but the total coverage is only eight hundred and thirty square feet compared to the thirteen hundred. Um, this area, as a reminder, is disturbed already, there is a ground, crushed stone pad there already, um, along with the gravel and grass access around it. Um, the location moves the garage wall to forty-three point nine feet from the wetland, and minimizes the impact of the coverage runoff. It's our opinion that this is the best scenario for this proposed garage. Any questions?
Well, I guess I have to agree with you that the suggestion I made would just create a lot of driveway impervious surface, and it wouldn't gain much, but the impact of it. So, it looks like you're reducing the buffer impact from six hundred and twenty-five feet to two hundred and forty feet, which is a good effort, I think, so I would support, um, with the, I mean, to the one.
Yes, I am questioning the area that you're showing that runs beside the garage, that's probably in the northeast. Why is that a dairy?
A swell?
No. This area right here.
Oh, to go into a door?
Why don't you put, why don't you put the man door in the middle? I mean, you got a twenty-four foot thing, you got two feet, eight foot, eight foot door, four foot for a man, for a man door. You got a room for a man door in the center, in the center of this building. I don't know why you put the man, the door off to the side, it created more impact, more impact.
You're, you're really dumb. With twenty-four feet, you stand the garage doors, not, not eight, so that's eighteen feet, then you get four foot for your door, so you, you, you pushing the cars right to the side of the garage, you wouldn't even be able to open the door. So. Anytime, typically anytime we're building a twenty-four foot wide garage, the man door is outside. And even then, a lot of times it's an outswing door.
Right, because you always open it in, bang it into the car.
Yep.
You don't need twenty-four's by, not taking.
No, no, no way.
I'm actually gonna take it off the side of my garage for exactly that reason, because I don't want to put anything in the car on the side. I agree, I think this cuts down the impact, it's moved it as tight as it's reasonably bad.
And the flow into the wetlands, that's true, number two is corrected, I think, the one.
I'm okay.
Well, I mean, it's like to the, the, not, has fewer, lower buffer disturbance, but does that more?
Look at all the surface.
Yeah. It's supposed to focus on disturbance, and, but I think that's the service that I can raise.
Sure.
Do you mind reading the hype, right? Raising it? Rising it?
I remember what. All right. Number one, the proposed detached garage is allowed to be used in the general residential district. Its placement reduces the impervious surface and water runoff impact in the existing leach field slopes. Proposal will not have no impact on the nearby wetlands. After reviewing, reviewing, number two, after reviewing many options exist to retain a wall each with the wetland buffers pose difficulties in the garage placement. Part of the garage is slid back into the yard creates a larger driveway, increases the impervious surface and the difficulties for the owner to maintain. The driveway would still impact the wetland buffer. See exhibit two attached. Relocating the retain a wall and each field is unrealistic and unfair expense with potential damage to the leach field. Number three, the placement of the garage is as far as possible based upon reasons stated above. The proposed location allows for some of the water to be redirected away from the wetland and reduces direct impact to the wetland by the reduction in previous surface. This area is also an existing disturbed area. The existing fresh stone would be removed and long repainted, improving drainage. Number four, per plan note number nine, required erosion and co measures would be used during construction to contain soil runoff. Number five, all activities will be constructed within the existing tree line and fenced area. No additional trees are being planned to be cut. Disturbed soil around the garage will be re planted with grass. See the attached photos. Number six, this is a minimal disturbance project with disturbed area being lawn and crushed zone. And there is nothing planned to have an impact on the well and or existing vegetation. Impervious surfaces proposed are as minimal as possible.
I do have one question. Are you finished with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. If I'm looking at that property, what way is Nipple Lake? What way, what direction?
It would be kind of one in a little bit south of the property. So if you look at the plan, it would be up to the right. Kind of goes down behind.
Near Scarpones? That way?
Yeah, it's actually goes down behind the Lake View Estates. You kind of see that butter behind. Down in the. Southeastly direction. You can see all the contours are kind of going in that direction.
So that's not going to affect that lake in any way, am I right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Get a big wetland in between there. Anything getting down to the water.
The lake is.
It has right now to help.
The lake, the lake has been affected by the lands up there with fertilizing and coming down into the lake and causing boil. So I do know that.
Yeah, and the wetland buffer that we're actually getting relief from is actually more of an isolated wetland. You can actually see on the site plan, you can actually see right where it has the bearing. You can see the space between the two wetlands.
Is that? Is that hail? Is it Hales Wetland? I mean, pond or whatever you want to call it. Do you know, does it have a name? Because I know this up there.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Do it now, maybe 75 feet or 100 feet.
And then we'll be asking for the 15.
Any other comment from the board? Hearing them, at this time I'll open public comment. Hearing no public comment. I will close public comments. Looking for a motion to approve.
I think make a motion, we approve the nine point six special permit for application.
I'll second that.
The seconded.
Seconded by John Driscoll. Motion by Ron Allen, seconded by John Driscoll. Roll call vote.
Can be the line.
Just the line.
Just your eye. You'd be in the. Tap eye.
Masucci, aye.
If you'd like to read it.
At the generator and meetings, the condition approved the application. The application has met all town warrants regulations of the town of Barrington. All the present conditions must be met with at expense of applicant prior to plans being certified by the planning board. To vacation plans prior to commission, the site work, reporting of any plans. Once these present conditions are met and the plans are certified, the group is concerned by. If all the present conditions not met within 12 calendar months a day, the generator. Day. Generator 234, board's approval, consider last, like usual agreeable extension has been granted by the board. I will mention that the wetland was approved. I know it's on here, I didn't mention that in those decisions. The conditions president will be at the final plan, the owner's signature, wetland scientist signature, professional surveyor signature, the legend. Please add the note, the nine point six special permit is approved for construction wetland buffer for impact size of 240 square feet. At final, all comments, the applicant for site plan review subdivision regulations shall be addressed. Site plan review. Any outstanding fees paid at town are obtaining board signature, outfit, show cement two full size copies of site plan with one, one by 17 copy and PDF A file format supporting documents of the current article three. Of the Barrington site plan review regulations, the letter explaining how the applicant has to have the conditions of approval to plan yourself. Planning board shall sign a date of plans within the conditions of approval. Board shall address two full size copies of plans to the records and one 117 by copy and PDF A file format for the case over. The general subsequent conditions, there's no active and substantial work through part of this approval. It's commenced upon the site within two years, the date of sign, this should expire. Extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority vote of the board. As long as this applies for at least three days prior to expiration date. Board may grant only one test extension for any proposed site plan. All our plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is the final section as being expenditure of at least 25% of the infrastructure improvements to part under this approval. Infrastructure shall be in this instance, construction roads, storm drains improvements. Indicate out the site plan R S A. Six seventy four, 39. Current use of the property or portion of it, because of current use, the county must provide, county, us posting department, for use map and the other I've seen to. Share requirements of R S A 79A and the new capture department for new administration controls are satisfied. Wish you very best luck with your projects. Congratulations.
I guess. One. Back in the way.
He's ready to go. Wait before you.
Next one, you see, as well as way, I go ahead and submit applications 260-7 and 7-1-ER-22-LL/3 lots. For Susan Johnson, just cross out.
If you're all right with the circle there, I think that would be best.
Yeah.
You know what? Um.
Oh. Do they know this over?
Yeah.
Put it next to the.
The easel, the easel next to the podium.
Yeah.
That are. At the college. Thanks.
John, not block the, oh, you see the.
Yeah. Nice, yeah. That's good.
Hey.
I don't know if you can even see it on.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. I'm Joel Reynolds and I work for Lloyd Money's Associates.
Yep.
I am here for a lot line adjustment between 368 and 370 Mary Hill Road. Also known as tax map 260 lot seven and seven dash one. It's not that dot, it's dash. This is their confirmation, it's dashed, no dots, dashed. So this is lot seven one right here. I gave you a little packet with the colored plans on there. In the back, it is two recorded plans. First one, 6996 plan. Created this conservation land out here. It's all part of this. This was all its parcel here, entire parcel here. Except for 80 acres were put in conservation easement out here, but it was owned by this lot here. And that area in there was the area that's not included in the easement. That's the area that would, I'm subdivided, just, just that area. I also get your plans, age five dash one nine. That was in 2006. Lot seven one, seven lot, seven one is created right here on that plan, that subdivision that. Would move in 2006, that's created seven dash one. Seven dash one is trying to get an area of land from lot seven. Going to be this area right here, it's white, blue, hatched area. So that their existing driveway that runs up through here will be entirely on their property. The interesting with this, this area right here, right now their access is here, but their driveway goes across here. It's on lot seven as well, that comes in here. Whole idea of do this lot line adjustment is so that they have that entire driveway on their property. Not proposing new development. By this lot line adjustment. Lot seven one was created by that subdivision. It was. Created as four, 4.07 acres. With this lot line adjustment, it's going to be 4.9 acres. Because we're increasing the lot area of lot seven dash one, we will not need DES approval. They had previously got that approval when they created that lot. So that's part of the application is a lot line adjustment. That's what this is all about here. Now, we're also at the part of this application is to subdivide lot seven, which is against the whole thing, but just the. Area that was not included in the conservation area. So, so currently lot seven is comprised of the eight acres of conservation easement in the area that was not included in the easement. And it's shown on that 69-96 plan. Lot seven has an existing dwelling. Which is 686, 368 Mary Hill Road as well, septic system and driveway. The new area of this lot would be 5.13 acres. And that's just of the area that's in the not including. Easement area. So it's going to be combined with the 80 acres in easement. And that's going to be attached right here. So it's all, all of that land there. So it will be 85.13 acres. The proposed lot lines are configured so that lot seven can also continue using the existing woods rug to access the conservation easement area. All through here. I was very careful that because it's part of this lot, I am 75 feet wide here. So I need your requirements as well as up here. Because of the size of lot seven, it also will not need DES approval because it's going to be over five acres. We have dug two test pits that are near the existing leach field. Behind the house, but no new development is being planned for this lot. I'm just trying to satisfy your, your requirements for showing the test pit areas. Proposed lot seven two. Is this, this lot here? And this lot will be set as 3.62 acres with a contiguous uplands of 150 square feet. So I'm going to exceed the requirements of a lot sizing for that. And also this has. Both property lines would be along the conservation easement. This is that easement along here, so that is the property line. It won't extend it all out into the conservation land. Lot seven two, which is the lot we're talking about, will be a back lot with frontage of 50 feet on Mary Hill Road. This neck area here, and that neck area is only 16,000 square feet. So the remaining area is well over the 80,000 required by lot sizing for you. Because lot seven two will be less than five acres, it will require DES subdivision approval, which we will be applying for after we get conditional approval for this, this project. As part of the DES requirements, we are showing test pits five and six, 4,000 square foot potential effluent disposal area, a possible well with a 75 foot. So I've also, you've also got a topographic plan. That shows all of that. Got 4,000 square foot area here, proposed well here. Potential well. Only one wetlands out here exceeds the 3,000 square feet. This is the only one that does it. So I have to show a buffer on that. However, all the wetlands that are shown on that will have to meet the DES requirement for septic system, except back for 50 feet, so. But this plan is not, this is for your purposes, not DES purposes. Only one wetland exceeds 3,000 square feet. This one's very close. I've given you a list up in the corner here, I've numbered all the, the wetlands and I gave you a list here of what the sizes are. I realize it's very close to 3,000, but it really, really is under 3,000. It's very close to 3,000, but. What the supervisor must tell me, lies don't figure and figures don't lie, so it is under there. Second, the next lot that we're talking about now is proposed lot seven three. And it is being created as a conventional subdivision with 224 feet of frontage on Mary Hill. It will be 2.36 acres with a contiguous uplands of 98,000 square feet. The proposed lines will be along the conservation easement and will not include any, again, right along that area that, that easement line. Lot seven three will be less than five acres and it will also require the DES subdivision approval. We'll be applying for along with lot seven dash two. Seven, lot seven three will show test pits. If we show this test pits right here, the 4,000 square foot area, potential well location here. It's by this application, I've asked it for a few waivers, so I'll approach them like that. Be ready for that.
I just have one question to play it. Yep. On seven three, the driveway access is going to be from the Mary Hill Road?
Yes.
And what you said, what did you say was? So when I look at lot seven two, I've got 150, that's 7,000. Square feet of. It's the lot size, 150,000 of contiguous, contiguous uplands. And you said you didn't count the neck?
Yeah. The next only sixteen thousand square feet.
Yeah, fifteen was.
I rounded it up for.
Appreciate it. And that was, and that's not counted, factored into your calculation there, correct?
Right. But so it exceeds your requirements. So.
It's got to be the two week requirement. Right, right.
Yeah.
I would get that too. It was just. And it looks like the wetlands is what, twenty, twenty-six hundred feet or something?
Yeah. You have to do the numbers. I get contiguous and I got.
Oh.
Is it? You're really looking for the contiguous, right? So.
Yeah. I was just curious.
I didn't bother breaking it down in the.
Got you. That's I was, I was.
If I was closer to sixty, I would stop and move somewhere.
Well, I was, you said, you know, wires figure and figures don't lie. So.
Any other questions? You all set?
No, I've got it.
I have a question about access to the conservation area.
Yes.
For outside.
I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know why about the particulars of the easement.
Well, also it's in current use.
Yeah.
With a recreational discount.
Yeah.
Of ten percent.
None of that's changing, none of that easement.
Well, that requires people to be able to use it.
Which, which, which it still is.
So that, well, right now, of course, they, they just go. They win there occasionally and those are the conservation commissions letting hikes up there.
And is there an area over here they can?
I see that, but that's the confluence of Hemlock, Partridge and Mary Hill. No place to park. And it's only, it's got a hundred and twenty-six feet of frontage there. Is it wooded? Is there a trail in there?
No.
No, I'm not. So I'm talking about the corner you just, you just showed up there.
I don't know that.
Oh, it's a, it's a super blind corner.
Right.
There's, nobody's accessing anything through there.
I've done, I don't know.
I just wonder, they, they had plans to allow people to access that common use. The area in common use, which is also conservation easement.
I think they do now, don't they?
I know they do now, but.
That's not supposed to change.
That was before this, you subdivided into three lots.
That's ratio.
This is how they get in through here anyways?
I believe they do, yeah. But it now becomes more of a private driveway for lot seven.
It always was, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
It's the same.
I just thought I'd toss that out.
Yeah.
If there's no answer at this point, that's fine.
I know they're not going to change that conservation easement.
Yeah.
I don't think they can.
No. Okay.
I think it's going to be still, everybody's accessing through that driveway.
I guess the point I was trying to make is that intersection is, Andy mentioned that there's no place to really.
No, that was one of the reasons to, one of the thoughts on this whole thing was they, every so many years they do forest, they do.
Right.
Logging out there.
Yeah.
And that was, like, can they use this? No, they can't use that area. So this is always, it's very important that lot seven continued to have that.
Yeah.
Rather than lot seven two have that easement that you're supposed to stay with the original house here.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do you want to accept the applications?
Yeah, accept this complete before we.
Seven sixteen dash seven and seven point one dash GR dash twenty-two dash LL.
I have a question online.
When we get public comment, I will open it up for that, but we are not a public comment.
Read a second.
Oh, so, okay. So motioned by Bob Tessie or seconded by Ron Allard. Roll call vote to accept the application is complete.
Capella, I.
Just go on.
Tessie, you're right.
Maybe I'm right.
Alan, I.
NAP, I.
Sutti, I.
But I have patients accepted as complete. Waiver requests.
Who's every man of those?
You should have them. So if you want to look on, if you want to look in the stack report for a cheat sheet, press the waiver. Are on the back there, but Joel can.
Helen, you want a copy of it?
I have a lot of paper here.
Well, I, I got it. It's just that. Not for everybody, but I have one.
Can you then? Share.
I got cheat sheets.
So the first waiver we're asking for is five point three specific plan information, which is five point three point one five survey property lines of the entire parcel. Reference plan one, which I had shown here at the sixty-nine ninety-six, shows a survey of the entire parcel and these recorded draft registry fees. This is a waiver to show the entire boundary of our submitted plan. The reference plan does approve the remaining boundaries. Not agreeing with the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant by resurveying the easement area. Agreeing with the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit of the examine the regulations since there is a recorded plan shows these boundary lines.
Yep. One of them. I would make a motion to waive Article five, section five point eight, section one, parent five, as not posing, not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant.
Take your pick.
Yeah.
Wait, wait. I got this one again. You're like, take your pick. I was like, I already got one.
But which whoever seconded it?
I got John.
Okay, roll call vote.
Capella, I.
Just go on.
Tessie, you're right.
Maybe I'm right.
Alan.
NAP, I.
Sutti, I.
Yeah.
The next one is five point three point one six existing grades. A waiver request is to show parography of the existing lot seven one and the conservation easement. The, the whole thing is that, that I've shown to paragrophy for all that we're developing here. That's, that's what the whole thing is here. And just asking for a waiver of not showing to par, I, I guess I technically have to tell the parography over here. But it's mainly for the easement area. I'm not showing to parry field there. That's what this whole easement, the whole waiver request is for. We have performance topic survey of the proposed areas of lot seven, seven two, seven three. And we do show two foot contours in those areas, having a topic of survey of the areas outside of who has developed the existing evaluation of this application, not agreeing with the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship. The applicant agreeing with the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent of the regulations.
It's second.
I'll make a motion to grant a waiver for five, five point one, I mean, five point three point one, Brent Z six, second.
Roll call vote.
Capella, I.
Just go on. Tessie, you're right. Maybe I'm right. Alan, I think that, bye.
Sutti, I.
Next easement is five point three point one eight. Estimate a location and use of all existing structures on the site and within one hundred feet of the site. Yeah, I'm showing everything that in that, the area that's being developed that I'm asking for for the lot line adjustment and for the subdivision. Our waiver request is to show any of those structures and features that are in the area of interest and being developed on lot seven, seven one, two, and seven three, not on the remaining eighty acre conservation easement or on the abutting lots. The applicant cannot. Would need to get permission from all the abutters within a hundred feet of the subject parcel and have the surveyors locate and draft these site features. We believe that performing additional survey and drafting these features would not assist the evaluation of the application. Not agreeing with the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Agreeing with the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intended of the regulations.
As far as you know, there are no other structures in this lot anyway.
Doesn't show up on any maps I've seen. So, and I haven't walked. I show, I show everything that's on this lot here.
I'll make a motion to grant a waiver for Article five, section five point three point one, parents eight, is not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Second. Roll call.
Capella, I.
Just go on.
Tessie, you're right. Maybe I'm right.
Alan.
NAP, I.
Sutti, I.
Five point three point one nine natural features. This is mainly because of the wetland donation. I've done the wetland donation of the area who transferred here and the three lots over here, we've done wetlands over there. It's really mainly for the, this over here, but there's a plan that's, the recorded plan shows a, a small wetlands up in here. That is all shown in this one at the time. The waiver, again, mainly is for eighty acres. A waiver request is to show any of those natural features that are in the area of interest being developed on lots seven, seven two, seven three, and not on the remaining eighty acres conservation easement or the abutting lots. But the donation was done by Joseph Noel, certified wetland scientist. And it's shown on the plans and the proposed supply areas. We believe that performing additional survey and drafting these features would not assist the evaluation of this application. Not agreeing with the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and agreeing with the waiver not be contrary to the spirit intent of the regulations.
I move that we accept the request waiver for five point three point one, one, preface nine, as not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent of the regulations.
I do, I do have one question.
Take it, Bob.
When I looked back at the old survey and I forgot that earlier, it, it shows a huge area that's noted as, oh, people's homes and that's not in the existing area. Never mind. Answer my own question.
Correct that.
Yep. Okay. So we have a motion, we have a first or a second.
Okay, Capella, I.
Tessie, you're right. NAP, I.
Sutti, I.
Last one is five point three point two proposed site conditions, which is five point three point two sixteen, small imitation. I just kind of covered myself when we go to try to stake each lot corner. I'll try to put bounds in if I can. I can't. I'll put a drill hole, a stone wall or whatever. The big problem is, is stones in the base of the rock. So I'm going through it just in case. I have to, I'll do it now instead of have to come back to the board. So.
Are you, was you?
Did you do man-made flexing?
You did, we did that, right? Yeah, they still just.
So.
No, we missed.
We must.
Article five point three point one, where it is ten. Five point three point one.
Yeah, you're right.
Existing roads, stone walls.
A waiver is to request only those structures that are, that are in the area of interest being developed and not on the remaining eighty acres up there. So again, not agreeing with the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Agreeing with the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intended of the regulations. And I've shown everything I can and give all the remaining structures. I haven't gone to any abutted properties, blocked them.
Make a motion to grant a waiver from Article five, section five point three point one, parents ten, is not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant.
My second.
You enjoyed it.
So.
You did, you did.
Capella, I.
Just go on. Tessie, you're right. That, bye.
Yeah.
Five point three point two, parents sixteen.
So we're doing it. We're requesting that only the proposed lot lines of lot seven, seven one, seven two, and seven three be monumented. Those submitted, submitted plans. Again, that, the recorded plan shows boundary and all the monumentation of the acres. And I'm just trying to avoid having to put more points in on that.
All right, this one I've got a bit of a minor problem with.
Yeah.
On, I think it's easy to test it all. On proposed lot seven point three, you were stretching along from the road to the end of the lot. You're supposed to have straight lines every, every three hundred feet.
Yeah, it, it will be when we're done. I don't know where some of those flying in the side, but I, and I, my, what I'm trying to say to you is that we will attempt to place the man boundaries that be among those brands we don't can. There may be problems with certification, but I, I will put one invitation per year regulations. So, so if I need a line that's over the three hundred feet, I'll put something in.
Well, you got a pin right there for that. It seems to be a pin right there would be a logical place.
You would think it would be, but if you're out in the field and there's a huge tree, it's not a logical place. So again, I'll let my field crew decide when they're out there where they can put something. It may be a spot that, hey, this is wide open. This is the nice plot to pad. So everything will be, but we won't be allowing this over three hundred feet.
Okay, with that pin, you know, for the, with the right of way, that's a logical spot.
Yeah.
So something in that area, I think, that's would be less than three hundred feet. That's a logical spot. Something.
Well, you're three eighteen back to that break off point.
Yeah, well, three hundred feet, you would think, yeah, which you need to pin something there.
And the crew will be about there anyways, putting that one side, so they're going to try to put something along with that.
Yes.
All right, now if you wanted to put it in.
Well, see this pin right here? I think a pin should go there. You know what I mean? So he, before, four years off.
You're going to need one, you actually need one on both sides.
I, but building, somewhere with that other pins, where they, where changes angle.
Sure.
Yeah, accepting field conditions may require some flexibility.
Sure.
But we need, I think it'd be a.
The certification of orientation and plan notation on the final recordable plans will show the set monuments. Previously, I said about previously recorded plans already showed monuments on the existing lot. Seven one here and the conservation easement. Not agreeing with the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Agreeing with the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent of the regulations.
I do have one, one question of that. When I look at the back boundary line, like we talked about not having to be on there, but you do have some pretty significant gaps.
Yeah.
In there, are you, is your plan to add a pin in there as well?
It will be anything that's over three hundred feet.
Okay, okay. I just wanted a final clarification. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, I'll make a motion to grant a waiver for five point three point two, preface sixteen, by not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and grant the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit or intent of the regulations.
Second.
Well, I think it's long over three hundred foot.
Which we have.
Yeah. I'm not asking for a waiver to that, so I'm going to go by your requirements of three hundred feet.
So we got a, so I second it.
Okay, roll call. Capella, I.
Just go on. Tessie, you're right. Maybe I'm right.
Alan.
NAP, I.
Sutti, I.
Right. And anything else you have? At this point, I would like to open public comment. If the board doesn't have any other requests.
There is someone online that.
Yes, that's, I wanted to make sure I gave them opportunity to provide their feedback.
Jeff and Michelle Durrell, I see that you have your hand up to make public comment. You're welcome to make public comment at this time if you need to unmute.
Thank you for having us. We are abutters to the property as well as neighbors who walk the new hall trails on a regular basis, as do all of our other neighbors. And we're concerned that that lot seven two is extremely close to the forest trail. And we want to make sure that we continue to have access to that recreational trail that we love and use so much. Thank you for your time.
That's why I saw him. That's why I saw him lot seven. It's not on seven two.
The trail is on lot seventeen? Or I'm sorry, it's on seven?
Well, it's on seven.
Well, I know the woods road is. I just wasn't sure about.
I think that's.
Talking about the woods road.
Right, that's.
So.
From the new hall trails that we walk. It appears to be abutting right along that lot seven two. And I just want to make sure they've cut a lot of trees back there. In that walk, we've had to avoid a lot of down trees that they've been pulling out of there. And I just want to make sure that we're going to continue to have access to that walk.
Yes.
Well, of course, there's gonna be a house there at some point, right? Wetlands on the right and the house on the left.
Mr. Chairman, there's another person online that, that's our hand, right?
Yeah.
Matt, if you want to unmute yourself for public comment, welcome to you at this time.
Hi, thank you very much. Matt Gommer, an abutter as well, to follow up on Michelle's comment. We, we do those trails on a regular basis and it didn't sound like you were aware of the trail head location, which is next to lot two sixty, which is the access point to the. Conservation, conservation land as well as the selt land behind there. So the follow up, I would, if you could clarify where that is accessed on the trail. Abutting against the pond, because we do use on a regular basis and the access has been. Pretty much taken over with the tree removal in recent months. So the adding land and potentially other houses is, is a concern of ours.
So I'm assuming the, it goes in next to the cemetery and then continues back. By the sounds of it from.
Yeah, it's actually to the right of plot two sixty.
To the right of lot two sixty. Okay, so that is, that nothing is changing. On that parcel, right? And I see that.
All the trails go back where those, the lot seven two appears to be going.
We're not in the conservation easement at all, so.
No, we're to read.
Right, they're talking about.
Well, no, 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 that actually, what he's saying is they go in on. That little spit that we were talking about, which is a hard corner.
Yeah, okay.
So they're going in there and if you follow.
It's on this plan right now.
Yeah, if you look at the Orson group plan, you actually can.
So he says the trees have been taken down. Get trees down there.
No, you wouldn't. Well, I mean, you technically in the conservation easement, you can still.
Well, you can, but.
You have a forest management plan.
If the trees coming down, re, re. In relation to accessing where you were. Going to put that, where a house would go. In the back lot.
No, I think it's on a conservation.
Cutting any trees that.
Okay.
The trees, the trees is both be in the conservation that they're cutting, I guess.
They're cutting in the conservation area, aren't we?
I believe so.
Oh. Which would be a force.
That's.
That's what you do with conservation land to actually maintain it appropriately.
The original.
That's what I understand.
Yep.
The original discussion was, you have a lady on.
Right, pointed out lot seven point two.
Right.
Is the reference, which is why.
Which would be the driveway going up to the back lot.
And no.
No.
No, it would be.
He's just worried that because of the, this lot.
Okay.
They're gonna lose the trail. But the trail is on the conservation easement.
Yeah, so that.
Right. Won't be affected by lot seven point.
Right, that none of, by the, by the review of this, none of that should be impacted because the. The conservation easement is currently.
Okay.
Where the.
I, I agree with you.
Okay, so we'll probably bend up.
Unless there is said trail that comes over and runs through lots seven, three, and seven, two, but that's not delineated. In the old map.
Right, right.
In that.
And I, and that's technically not in the conservation land.
Right.
Anyway.
Right.
Matt, did you have another question? I keep seeing your hand going up and down. I don't know if it, if you had another thing you wanted to add.
No, sorry. I just, I just. Uh, it just seems like there's not, it doesn't seem like he understands where the lines, because there are trails back there where the existing conservation and land is behind. Lot seven, so we were using those as well, but those have been taken over by the tree removal, which we understand is, you know, part of the, the land and their right to do so. But again, just concerned that more and more of that land will be taken over.
What I, so I don't know if we're speaking the same language. The land that they're cutting trees on is the conservation land. The lot that we're just, that we're, he's subdividing. Is actually in front of that and not part of the conservation.
It is. I don't think foresting that it or either or not.
I mean, I could always, I could ask the conservation mission if they know what activities are going out there and I could.
Well, they didn't have any. Right.
They didn't seem concerned about any of this.
No.
They're not changing any of the conservation ways.
Right.
So.
Right. And, and the only trails, so to speak, that I see are on the prior plan set. And those remain. I would assume, or just assuming that because they're foresting in there right now. They probably is creating some impact to the trail system, which I would anticipate.
Right. Because in years past, that new man. Once or twice a year, I believe, he opened it up and would park and rook down the path of the road. Next to the house. And it was just originally care to service that one to.
Mr. and Mrs. Durrell.
So I just want to confirm what I'm hearing is, is correct, that lot seven and seven two, the adjustments. Two that are being proposed will not impact the use of the forest trail that sits on the new hall easement.
Like a yes or no?
Is that correct? Yes?
Correct.
That's correct.
If. Um. Did ma'am, did you, or did you have? Did you look at the, were you able to look at the. Agenda with the attached maps? Present in it?
I have the maps attached online. It's just been very difficult to hear everyone speaking, not being present in the room. And I'm also comparing it to the new hall map that I use when I walk or the trail map that we use on a regular basis. And from what I see on the trail map, it directly abuts that seven two. And I just want to be concerned as a resident. That, you know, again, there's no parking there, so everybody that walks on that trail lives within a mile or so of that trail. But it does connect to the selt trails and we do use that recreationally. And I want to make sure that that part of this proposal, that that lot seven, two, and seven realignment. Does not impact the use of the recreational area.
Not a realignment, it's, there's no, yeah, there's no realignment, the, the lot line adjustments to create. The lot line adjustment from seven point oh to seven point one, and then the creation. Of the three lot subdivision being lots seven, seven, two, and seven, three. Um. Is allotted within that spot. It's not impacting anything that is classified as conservation land.
Can I ask her one question? The access that you were talking about, ma'am, is it to the right of the cemetery or to the left of the cemetery?
It, I live on Evans Road, so if you're coming from Evans Road, it would be before the cemetery. Currently, right now, there are pink markers outside where the access is. And there are orange markers further down on Mary Hill Road. Don't know if that helps you at all, but that's what I've seen as a change out there.
Yeah.
And the trees.
Hang on. Just so everyone knows, pink mark is my traverse station. It has nothing to do with anything else, so.
So the access to the trail is pretty close to the pink markers.
Okay, so. That. There's nothing. That goes in currently on the, in what is the conservation. Easement on that parcel. And we carry up through. Now, if the trail cuts over into lot seven, three, or seven, two. There may potentially be an impact. To the trail, but the.
Plus that's. They're there anyways.
But yeah, but that means the trail is, is on what is not considered conservation land in its current state.
So the map that we have for the new hall trail that is posted and found along the trail. Does indicate that the trail is all on conservation property. I just want confirmation that that trail will remain and that will not become part of lot seven, two. Especially that forest.
No, they, they couldn't, couldn't do that anyway. It's heated into conservation, into a conservation easement. That's what that means. This. Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. All right. Um. It's just time I'll close public comment. And I am looking for, what's that?
You need to go for something.
If you would, because I'd be looking for a motion to approve the application as.
And then take.
Complete. And then I will allow you, everyone, a five minute final break.
You guys were sitting there for a long time.
Good for you.
I, I smell. I got help there.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve. Two sixty dash seven and seven one dash P R dash twenty two dash. Um, slash, uh, three lots or the three lot subdivision.
That's like a. Give it to you. I'll give it to you.
Capella.
Now, bye.
So, G I.
That's a need right.
Yes. Well, do your part.
Okay. At the, at the Barrington Plan Board, January third, twenty twenty three, initially approved application. Application has met all the town ordinances, regulations of this town. You guys. This is more of like housekeeping, right? Uh, application has met all the town ordinances and regulations of the town of Barrington. All the precedent conditions must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of plans is a part of commencement of any site work, those funding plans. Once these precedent conditions are met, the plans are certified and approvals can certify. Please note, if all the precedent conditions are not met within twelve calendar months of the day, January third, twenty twenty four, the board's approval will be considered left unless the mutual agreeable. It should be granted by the board. The condition, that's number as follows. Um. Here, I'm gonna add, Ron, if you want me to add this note on here for the seven point three lot, I know you're discussing it. Do you want to, the conditions precedent, or you're okay with what you discuss?
You asked for a waiver from, from the boundary markers of the.
So.
Thing.
Okay.
Right. In here at the lot, which means it's still gonna mark every.
Oh, let's see.
Add the following to the plan notes, all of the group waivers. Number two, add the following to the plan, owner's signature, wetland scientist's signature, professional surveyor's signature. Existing street right of way dimensions and pavement with. Dimension of plans. I don't know.
No, I'm working on that. The town's the keeper of the information of the road with the stuff, so I'm trying to go through, trying to find the records.
Label, wetland sizes on all lots. I did see that you put that on there.
Which is.
The wetlands on lots, and we talked about it, but you had put it on the plan, so I can probably scratch on here. Yeah. Um, any outstanding fees paid to the town. I find out the middle, all outstanding comments to the applicant and town planner for site planning and subdivision regulations shall be addressed. Turn to obtaining board signature. Applicant shall submit two full-size paper copies of site plans, one eleven by seventeen copy. And PDF A file format. With supporting documents as referred article three of the Barrington Site Plan Review Regulations of the letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval. Planning board chair will sign and date all plans meeting the conditions of approval. The board shall endorse two full-size paper copies of the plans for records. In one eleven by seventeen copy and PDF A file format for the case file folder. General and subsequent conditions where no active and substantial work required is approvals commenced upon. Site in two years from the date the plan is signed. This is our point. But, um, shall expire and extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority vote of the board as long as it. By fully starebase prior to expiration date, board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. Our events must be submitted to the board review and ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in sections dating expenditure or at least twenty five percent of infrastructure improvements required in this approval. It's like, I probably should just, how about I just start now? Current use, subject property proportion of it is in current use. Um, applicant may provide town Barrington Assessment Department curriculum map under other understanding to ensure the crimes of R S A seventy ninety. Wish you the best of luck with your project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right. Five minutes. We're going to go do your business. And. Let's get to the monthly.
If anybody's online, we are taking a quick break. And we will reconvene in about five minutes. On you. On you.
Okay, tonight.
Okay, we can't give India cattle.
I've been there, done that.
Two thirty four dash twenty five dash one dash V dash twenty two dash.
All right, given the late hour, I'll be. As brief and succinct as possible. For the record, my name is Christopher Berry, I'm with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing TSB Construction, I'll see this evening. We've been before the zoning board of adjustments, we've received a variance to allow for the three lot subdivision that we're proposing. And we came before the board. Under a design review application to discuss the project's preliminary. Project is off of nine. Or Franklin Pierce Highway. It is on the backside of the large hill that goes to Meeting House Road. So the existing conditions. Of the site. Largely come to the top of the slope. And drain down towards Franklin Pierce Highway. The abutters that I was just speaking with, they own the farmhouse here. And have access over the old road that goes to the old fort. On some on our site in this location here. The former subdivision that we conducted on Meeting House Road is in this location. And Mr. Heir's lot and house is in this area here. And so this nine plus acres, almost ten acres of land. Was part of the subdivision that we conducted for the large open space subdivision we did on Meeting House Road. And happens to fall within the. Village District zoning. The applicant in the past has considered. Proposed townhouses on site and after a design review. They've reconsidered doing a smaller scale project to simply subdivide the parcel into three lots. One lot having a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Franklin Pierce Highway and then two back lots. In in behind the large farmhouse. The reason for that is to ensure. Really try and protect the people that have the frontage out on Franklin Pierce Highway. Again, in the village district, I think as we all have noted, there's a higher density that could be proposed here. But the style of housing that would be required is pretty prolific in Barrington currently under construction. The applicant has chosen to. To break this up into three pieces, so. The type of density that we'd be looking at is a single family house on this particular lot. Closest to the east, a single family home towards the center of the lot. And then there is the potential for a duplex to be constructed and condoized on the larger lot. On the remaining lands, that's not a definite. Definite to be constructed, but the lot is sized appropriately for that to meet, we would have a potential total density of four. Units. I did just discuss with the abutters, some of their concerns that the onset of the project has to do with. The impacts of the project on stormwater and how that impacts their site, how they live. Their well and their septic system or their effluent disposal system. They've given me permission to go locate all three of those, so you have a, the well is located approximately here, septic system is located approximately here. And they also discussed at the last meeting a large tree, they want to ensure that what we're proposing isn't going to damage a large. They said two hundred year old, I believe is what they said. Tree and we would locate that while we were there as well. The project. Requires driveway to be constructed. It'd be a shared driveway because it's three lots or more, it's required to be named and so. Vanessa's pointed out that we need to go through the select board process for the naming convention that would be required. Per N F P A, chapter eighteen, N F P one oh one, chapter eighteen. The access requirements do require it to be a passable width of twenty feet wide, which we've designed and requires. That there be a turnaround at the end of it, which we have also designed. What the ladies have asked me to do is consider. The large infiltration pond that we're proposing in this particular location, if it can go in any other location. We can look to see if we can move this further west, so it's not directly behind their domicile here. And we can certainly look to do that as we move forward with the planning process and with the planning board. The plan set includes a road profile, cross sections of the proposed driveway. How drainage will work, how final grading will look and appear. And the two stormwater structures, the one large one that I've just mentioned. And also the infiltration system that we have at the entrance to the project where. Stormwater is collected from the impervious surfaces, the developed surfaces. Captured, treated and then infiltrated back into the ground and then discharged to the normal flow path. We do have a large amount of flow that does come down from the original project design, there's a large. It's a bio pond that we designed at the entrance to Meeting House Road, it's actually in the corner of Mr. Heir's property or just office property. That discharges down through a wetlands and then topographically it comes down and around. And basically cuts through this area, so we do have to accommodate for that flow and ensure that that flow is not impeded. While also ensuring that we don't increase flow onto the flooding parcel. Again, I think as they pointed out at the last meeting, they have access over this this old road. And we were careful to ensure that the design includes basically a ramp up and down so that a large vehicle such as a pump truck. Could down as much like a normal crossing you'd have in a in a roadway system. The plan details out where four thousand square foot leaching areas would be, well placements proposed. As well as more detailed grading designs on the lots for the E D A areas as the site would be constructed out. The driveway profile does not exceed the maximum allowed of ten percent on the site. And I know that that was one of Chief Walker's concerns, so we want to make sure that he understands that. As part of the project scope. We do need to file for an N H D O T permit. For the driveway permit entering onto Route Nine, we did provide for sideline profiles at the entrance to the project. To ensure that we met their guidelines, four hundred feet in both directions, all season site distance, and that's calculated. For the N H D O T guidelines. And then lastly, I would point out that. We understand that this is a large impact in an area that currently doesn't have any impact. We understand that there are stormwater concerns by both the. The staff and the abutting landowners, and so we understand that the board is likely to have us go to C M A for their. Review of the engineering design for compliance with the regulations. And on some revisions that I've talked to the abutters about, I'd be happy to submit plans to C M A for a proposal. And then a review conducted by them. This project will require a notice of intent with the EPA and will require a state subdivision permit from N H D S as well.
Chris, you mentioned the drains plan. And looking at it, I think. I mean, a lot of it was good, but I think where the road takes a turn and it goes kind of parallel to Route Nine.
Yes.
I mean, and that other driveway comes down, it seems to me that we're gonna get a lot of water on that. Right there and steep slope on both sides. And I just see that flow going across that road causing problems.
You're talking this intersection here?
Right there.
So that intersection is designed to be super elevated in one direction. There are swales designed on both sides of the driveway, so the driveway actually creates a divide. So all of the stormwater from this section here, as it hits this driveway, it's designed to come down through a swell. And enter into basically a sediment four bay basin or in a pooling area, we have velocity reduction that takes place there. Cement dropout that takes place there and then it's discharged to the infiltration ponds here at the base of the hill. And then the area from the actual developed surface. Comes down through a pretty robust swell, two feet wide and that's actually three feet wide and three feet deep. To ensure that velocities are met, it's rock lines with riprap. And it's discharged down through a again, a settling area across culvert and then it's discharged again through a large. Swell system to the pond at the bottom of the hill.
And what happens on the downside, is it gonna be?
This side here?
Yeah.
So this roadway is designed to be super elevated in the up position, so it's super elevated to the. Right as you're driving along the alignment, so all of this stormwater is directed at each one of those devices that I discussed. It's not directed to sheet off the shoulder here.
Okay, what blends on the road, where that where's that go though?
Where does the road go?
You're stopping for going across, depending on the road.
What lands on the road heads in this direction here. So everything is super elevated.
It's hoping it toward that.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And that that way we ensure that it's managed and not just pointed at the abutting landowners.
The the only question I had around that was when you. When I think about like winter maintenance and winter plowing is that. You're gonna end up with a bank in there and that's gonna sheet up and that's where you end up getting. The ice side bend becomes an impact for the people that live there as well.
Yeah, and so. That's the reason why the swell design is so robust. It allows for the swell design is wide enough and deep enough to basically accept those snow loads. If we were to go with a smaller, less or a shallower swell, in that particular case, you would have more embankments that we'd have to deal with. But in this particular case, given its design and depth, that snow will end up in the swell line, so. We start to think about the last storm event that we've had, most recently. We had snow, we had some frozen ground and we had embankments, and so we had water. That is sort of going in every which direction because it has nowhere to go. In this particular case, we've heard designing more and more for those events with these larger. Wider, deeper swells so that we can accept that snow load.
I was trying to catch, like, looking at the points that it's tough to see how deep that cuts back in. Is there a like estimated amount on that or maybe it's missing at the line?
So describe what you what you're asking.
The the so from the shoulder coming in, you've got a depth down and then a width.
Yep.
Going back.
Still three and three, so three down.
Three down.
Three vertical feet down and then three out and then two to one slope back. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a good good snow event here, I think you're still gonna be tight in there, but.
I mean, there, I'm not saying that there isn't some circumstance in the world that. You know, we are designing for, but we're designing for. A hundred year storm event and we're designing for things that we're seeing on a regular basis.
Chris, just the roadway, whatever it is, comes down, it's not in the middle of the fifty foot right of way. I think we talked about that, but I don't remember why you pushed it off to them. For the right.
Well, a few different reasons, we first, we got a special exception to allow that. The second is we needed room for grading on the western side of the driveway. So we needed room to allow for the fill slope, we needed room to allow for. A level spreading device so that when we cross the site with a culvert, we're not pointing and discharging a culvert right at the boundary line. We need a another sort of a settling system there and a level spreading device, so it goes into what's known as sheet flow as it crosses the boundary. But we also needed room between their boundary line and where we're proposing the driveway to ensure that we are. Getting those ramps the way we need them and that they're not too acute so that a large vehicle can traverse.
You're supposed to put it in the middle to the extent possible, I knew the reasons why we would go back to the middle of the day.
Yep. The other, one of the other reasons is site distance, as you move further west. You start changing the angle at which you approach the curve at the church. And you start reducing your site distance, so this optimizes site distance as well.
Looking at their easement, which is probably a prescriptive easement, obviously. Ever think about granting a deed of easement to them only for future problems since. You left three new property owners.
I hadn't considered that, we certainly can, I've noted the plan quite heavily, which would be recorded at the registry of deeds, that there's likely a prescriptive easement there. But I can certainly talk to the applicant about. It will iron out a future landowner saying you can't do what you have been doing, yes.
Yeah. Which we seem to be getting a lot of that recently.
Yeah.
Other situations.
I saw you could see the approval for.
Yeah, so we actually received a variance, we actually received a variance to allow for the. Fronted lot to be less than two hundred feet, which will allow for the backbone. And then a special exception to allow the driveway not on the lots frontage and to be shared with three. Three lines.
Okay, so the grant for that. We've got mindset, it's a lesser, it's a lesser evil with buildings as opposed, residential buildings as opposed to townhouses.
I would phrase it as a better project plan, but you could throw evil around, yes.
Because that back lots have been subdivisioned, so.
Well, that's.
So we can stick our nose there, but I think that'll be unreasonable.
Other commentary from the board?
Take a motion that we accept the application, two thirty-four dash twenty-five dash one dash B dash twenty-two dash three lots as complete.
I didn't say anything. He said it anyway.
I started to speak up and no, no.
You're gonna have to tape it across.
So I have a motion, a second roll call vote.
Capella.
Just go ahead.
Napa.
Sujie.
The only thing that stood out when I, and I would have to look on it, was I know you have the, and I, it's just more of like one of those where I'm, where I was looking at it. Having two backlots is two residences, but then having one of them being a multi-unit dwelling, does that change it? Because suddenly now you're at four. It's, although it's still a residence. So it's just like, yeah, because you have duplex, it's suddenly.
So I think we rolled this last time where the driveway regulations talk about lots and not units.
Right.
So we have three lots, which is permitted under the underlying zoning.
It can be 20-foot ropes anywhere, right?
Yeah, they have to meet the fire codes, 20, 20 feet and 18 with shoulders.
Yeah, since I, I don't remember anything coming out of it and I don't remember seeing anything as I was looking, I was just giving myself one glance. We made a permit road revision, right, so that's gonna be. And this plenty is, you need to take the neck out, this plenty of acreage, right?
Yeah, I believe I provide the calculation, less than that on the plan.
I looked at it, it seemed like that was a problem.
And I, I know we talked about lot width, so I added a dimension to the most narrow of the lots.
So I think I'm, I was pretty much designing something, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought we were, this one was stretching it with the lot shapes. It meets the requirement, but it could be follow the guidance under our subdivision regulations. It's like, you're really walking the line on that one.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't look particularly like this either, but once I get the zone variances, I think, I don't think there's anything that doesn't comply.
But even still, it, this is where I look at, this is the part where I start looking at, when you look at our regulations and lot sizes and everything, it meets it, but boy, it's a, it's a bitter pill to swallow on it. And everybody's got their input on that, but you're starting to see more and more of these that come in that these lots look like turds. I'm sorry, I, I'm not like, it's, I'm not.
I only cry a little bit at night.
I'm not saying anything about like what it is, I'm just saying when you look at the layout and the configuration of them, it really is.
I know, too.
Hey, I'm like, I'm just calling it like I see it at this point. And it's not just this one, we've had.
Whatever has to do the.
No, all my other ones do, I guess.
Like, I don't.
I mean, I don't like to see that, but I think it, once I get the nurse, like, applies the regulations, so. Whether I like it or not, if it applies, it applies, but, so.
It's what it is. Yeah, it, it's just even from a compliance end, it's like, we're right on the line.
And we want, I mean.
Which I've always given Chris accolades, that he walks that line.
Okay, line is okay, guys, personal line is not, walking is okay.
So I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure the ladies would like to talk and then I'd like the board to refer this to CMA engineers. Great. At this time, I'll open public comment.
Just in case anybody's wondering, there's nobody online. Or besides Don, but. Hi, everybody, I'm Paul Ken. Chris addressed some of the issues that we've, we already had our preemptive meeting there. Big thing was the rain garden right behind our house and the turnaround right behind our house. Also had some concerns with, I mean, this driveway goes our entire length of our backyard. I did see some trees on the plan. I think I counted 11 and hoping there's more. Because that's a, that's a lot of property, because, you know, cars coming and going and lights on our house and, you know. So that's definitely a concern. And I also, I don't know, I didn't see plans for where the septic was supposed to be, is that not? You don't know yet or did I miss it?
If you look at the plan set right in front of you, you can actually see.
Yes, a lot of this is, it's a lot of lines.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. All right, because you want to come in and look and see where our well is, right?
Yeah.
Because our well is about, yeah, about right there. Yes.
These are the large trees, maybe.
Yeah, the big 200-year-old tree is about there.
And if you look, I think on that plan, you'll, you'll see where there's a headlights sweep, there could be a problem, there's, there's trees indicated.
Yeah.
So, and up, go right there, there, so coming down that driveway where the headlights could sweep your house, there's trees, they'd have blocked that. So that's, that's taken those things into consideration.
I thought, well, I did see that, but I was just, I mean, like I said, it's like we're surrounded. You know, there's a house down here, a house here and a house here and a road. So a little more privacy maybe, I don't know.
The subdivision regulations, but it showed protected against undue noise clear and slightly missed and other nuisances which are detrimental to property damage. So he's got to work around those.
Okay, and that's kind of with the, with the rain garden too, it's kind of, you know, right out the back. That was really it, I mean, we already kind of talked about everything over there. So again, erosion, impacts on my well, my property value, access to the road. You don't want to be the dead roses, Senate talk. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
And ask Oak Street. Chris, the rainwater is still.
They're gonna run down.
I don't walk too good.
I understand.
Had back surgery twice.
Yeah.
Just for, the only thing is this is recorded, so it allows people to see it, that's the only reason I ask. I apologize for making you come up here. I do appreciate you doing it.
Thank you. I'm just more worried about the rainwater coming down the hill. And you know where I am.
Yeah.
You've helped me out.
Oh, yeah. It won't, it won't be, anything that we're doing is downslope of you and it will not affect you.
Okay. Because that's what I'm worried about too, like, you know, the well and all that. We all know water runs down the hill. I've been, I did construction for 25 years, I know flows. Yeah, that's it.
Thanks, thank you for coming up, I do appreciate. Any other comments? From the board, anything else from the public comment, I know we, I still see you folks online.
No, it's me, Barbara and Donna.
Donna.
And the meeting.
At this point, I'll close public comment and and then looking for a motion to send this to CMA for review.
I'll second that motion. Looking by John, second by Bob. Roll call vote.
Capella.
It's good one.
Cecilia.
A B I.
Alana.
Napa.
Sujie.
Thank you for it.
Thank you very much. There's patients and another lady. Thank you, everyone, for sticking in here with us through this.
Yep. All right. Anything else for other business? For my staff reports. From to ensure the meeting.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Capella.
Cecilia.
I don't know, Andy has.
And then company.
Ron.
Ron.
Second.
Thirdly, I was second.
I don't know if I voted for it.
Donna.
That's Donna.
Yes.
Voting for her.
Oh, my turn, aye, aye.